Well, good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco's Council Special Meeting, followed by our regular meeting. Today is September 15th, 2025. The council thanks you for being a part of our city government. At meetings, the city council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packets for both meetings are available at the City of Pasco's website at www.pascowawa.gov/agenda. These meetings are also being televised live on PSC TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and Microsoft Teams webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available at the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by asking the Pasco Ask Pasco app. With that, let's get a roll call.
Councilmember Barajas?
Present.
Councilmember Blaisdell?
Present.
Councilmember Harpster?
Present.
Councilmember Peralas?
Here.
Mayor Protam Grimm?
Here.
Mayor Milm?
I am present. With that, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with the interests and intentions of all.
All right, that brings us to four, which is interviews for our vacant council position number four. So, do you want me to read the description? So, tonight, the city, the council will interview four finalists for council position number four, serving council district number four. After the interviews are concluded, council will adjourn to executive session to deliberate the attributes of the candidates. Upon return to the meeting, council has the option to appoint a candidate to council position number four to serve to December 35th, 31st, 2025, when the term for position number four ends. While the candidates may stay in the council chambers during the interview process, as this is an open public meeting, council asks that all candidates remain outside the council chambers until it is their turn to be interviewed, so that the interview questions are new to each candidate. After their interview is finished, the candidate may return to the council chambers. At this time, will all council candidates please step outside the council chambers while the council finalize the interview questions? I'd like to do number one and 1A. So, like, no, start with Mayor Protam Grimm, which one would you like?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just go right down the line and take number two. Thank you.
Okay. Let's keep moving to our right here.
And we're doing one each, right?
Yes.
I will do question number three. We'll just go down the line.
Okay.
I'll do number six.
There. And...
I'll do number five.
Number four.
Okay, well, and then, yeah, number seven we're not doing. Well, I do number seven. So, I guess we'll have Grimm do two and seven. Okay, I think we're good. And Grimm is doing two and seven.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for taking time out of your day to come down here.
Thank you.
Well, just, I guess, for the record, let's state your name and...
Joe Cotta, District Four.
All right, sounds great. So, we'll get right into the questions. Based on your research, what is your impression of the primary duty of a city council member?
The primary duty?
Yeah, the city councilman.
I think probably it has to do with listening to the constituents. You need to be a good listener, need to figure out what's on their minds. You know, they're going to really have their hand on the heartbeat of the city, especially if they're heavily involved one way or the other. Usually, the people that are involved are the ones that are talking to you, and there's some offense one way or the other. We want to make sure that we're running the city right. We need to make sure that the people involved are approving of us in some way, and that we do our business.
Okay. And then, 1A is, what are your thoughts on balancing the interest of your district and the overall interest of the city as a council member?
Well, typically, their interests are going to be my interests, but there's, you know, maybe two constituents want a couple of different things. And so, you know, I'm going to listen to them, I'm going to explain where we stand, why we stand where we stand, where I stand, where the council stands, and how we got there, and help them understand the practice that we applied to come to that decision.
All right, well, thank you. That's the end of my questions, and then Mayor Protam Grimm.
Is it better? It's, yes, no?
All right, well, thank you. That's the end of my questions, and then Mayor Protam Grimm.
Testing, one, two, it's still crackling. Is it better? It's, yes, no?
All right, well, let's pass it on to Mayor Protam Grimm for the next set of questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Cotta, for applying for the position. What do you believe are the highest priority projects in the community of Pasco?
You know, I was encouraged to see the position you hold of trying to reduce death, you know, traffic deaths by half. I mean, I don't know if you can talk about an issue that's more important than life or death, and so I think that's probably a pretty significant issue. When you're talking about lives, you want to, you know, so I guess in a general category, you could just say safety. And so, there's a lot of things involved in safety, you know, less crime, less drugs, supporting law enforcement. You know, I know there's some priorities to ensure that we have district attorneys available, and public defenders, I mean, and, yeah, supporting, supporting public safety. If we don't have safety, people aren't going to want to come here, they're not going to want to build their businesses here, they're not going to want to live here, and so safety is obviously a big one.
Thank you.
All right, let's move down to Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, and thank you for participating, taking interest, and being more involved in the community. So, my question to you is, what have you observed as areas of improvement for the City of Pasco? What do you think we're not doing correctly, or we need to do better?
Well, you know, I think we're all struggling as a culture, and a lot of cities with homelessness and behavioral health, and I'll be encouraged to, if I'm appointed, to help with that, with solutions to those problems. With my experience with U-Term for Christ and substance abuse recovery, it's just, it's just something that's important to me, deep in my heart. I know a lot of guys who have gone through those programs, who have been homeless, who have suffered from behavioral health issues, and helping those guys get better. And so, I think that's something that, you know, it's in a general sense, but, you know, we can always be better there. We need more resources for those guys.
All right, so, we're going to jump to, what's that? Let's jump to question number four, and Councilwoman Blaisdell.
How would you handle a citizen contacting you with concerns about the actions of a city employee or a policy decision of the city council?
Well, you listen, you know, they need to be heard, and there's probably a proper channel and a process that you want to take them go through, to go through a grievance process, and whoever that contact person is for that situation, you're going to want to help him, you want to have kind of a kind handoff, introduce him to the person you need to talk to or something in those regards, if it's appropriate. And then, there's a confidentiality that you want to maintain, and that's probably about it, you know, it's just passing them off kindly, because, yeah, I guess in a negative sense, you don't want to start doing an investigation on your own. There's a proper channel for those things.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Let's jump to question number five, and we're going to go with Councilman Leo Peralas.
Thank you, Mayor. What special skills or insights do you believe you could bring to the city council? What sets you apart from other, from the other candidates?
Probably my background in agriculture. I'm also a pastor. You know, I think about 20% of the city's land use is situated in agriculture, and so I can bring some things to the table there. I managed a thousand-acre vineyard, and so I have general management experience in the sense that you're managing, you know, assets and employees and capital budgets and operating budgets, and I have union negotiation experience, you know, I have my chemical applicator's license, my commercial applicator's license, I know about chemicals, I know about safety and those kinds of things, and process and procedure. And as a pastor, I'm going to be experienced with the needs of the community, I'm going to be experienced with managing a nonprofit, and those kinds of things.
All right, thank you for that. So, we're going to jump to question number six, which is Councilman Peter Harpster.
Thanks for being here this evening and for applying for the position.
Thank you.
After thorough discussion at a public meeting on a controversial issue, you find yourself on the other side of a majority decision of the council. Tell us how you might react.
I mean, if I'm really dug in on the position, and all of you guys are on the other side of that, you know, you handle that professionally, you've got to support the ruling of the council, and so there needs to be some support there. If I want to dissent, there's a professional way to do that, there's a process for that, there's a timing involved in that. But, you know, personally, I would like to strive to have good working relationships with all of you, and if you don't do that by behaving immature, then things don't go your way. So, the relationships are important to me, working with all of you is important to me. And then, you know, on the other side of that, you know, if somebody dissents from my position, and I have the majority, the person who dissents still has a different perspective on things, and it's good to pay careful attention to those things, especially when the issue comes up again. It's like, well, you were against us before, what do you think now? What do you think we could have done differently here, those kinds of things? And so, there are times when it's important to dissent and bring the issue up again, but it needs to be done in a professional way.
All right, well, thank you for that. So, we're going to, the final question for your interview is by Mayor Protam Charles Grimm.
Thank you. What is your vision for the City of Pasco in the next 10 to 15 years, and what changes will need to be made to make it a better place to live and work?
Well, it looks like our projections over the next 10 to 15 years, we're expecting 40, 50,000 more people, and so it looks like 121,000 in 2046, there's a, anyway, 2046, and 19,000 more housing units, 16,000 more jobs we anticipate, and so really, we're looking at a situation where we just need to be prepared to have the infrastructure for the city to grow that way. And where we're going to do that, you know, I talked about safety already, you know, a lot of the reasons I think people are interested in moving into Pasco, or the reason a lot of people live here, is regarding the transportation resources, you know, if we have an airport, you know, the railway is obviously huge, the port, and agriculture is a big reason that people live here, you know, supporting agriculture in some way. So, as far as things I would do to change it, I like the city, you know, we're doing things with the projects, you know, the Martin Luther King Community Center, the downtown project, the development on Broadmoor, you know, the neighborhood parks, all those kinds of things are really great, and I think a lot of that stuff is going to be coming into fruition during this next term. It's just a wonderful thing to be a part of, you know, I just like leadership, I like working with a team, and I think it'd just be a neat opportunity to do that with you guys.
All right, well, you are done, so thank you.
Thank you.
And if we could get the next gen?
I'm going to leave this here.
So, yeah, you could stay if you'd like, or more welcome to what you'd like.
Thank you.
We could hear you, so just say your name, and we can proceed.
Good evening, Pat Jones.
All right, well, thank you, Pat Jones, for taking time out of your day to be here. Do appreciate it. So, we're going to, like, jump right into the questions, and so, based on your research, what is your impression of the primary duty of a city council member?
There are two answers I'd like to offer to that. First of all, it would be what the law of the cities say that you must perform, the duties that you have to perform, whatever those might be, as far as governing and managing the cities, managing the taxpayer dollars, being fiscal in how we do that, making sure that policies are followed, making sure that government is done by listening to the people, making sure that infrastructure is kept in place, and then, and all of those parts that the law says that we must do. I have a set of bulleted, of bulleted items that I have followed as an elected city official for over 14 years myself, that I'd like to share with you that specifically answered that question that I have followed for years. I believe firmly in a balanced pattern of growth, a vibrant, livable community, a safe, healthy, inclusive, skilled community, efficient transportation, infrastructure systems that are safe and ongoing, economic stability and growth, outstanding recreational and cultural opportunities, and responsive, accessible, and effective government. So, philosophically, those are my beliefs. From a day-to-day standpoint, I believe we have to meet all of the things that I mentioned first, and be responsible to the citizens who put us there.
All right, well, thank you for that answer. Part A of that is, what are your thoughts on balancing the interest of your district and the overall interest of the city as a council member?
It's important to know what the needs and the wants are of the people in the area that we represent. We are elected by an area, and it's important to know what the needs and wants are of those folks. Are those needs recreation? Are those needs streets? Are those needs public safety? And to know what they are and bring those to the full council, so everyone knows what's going on. There are times when it will be my job to bring those forward and push those from a stronger level. There will be times when I will need to work with the other council members and understand where those fit into the full picture of the city. It's impossible to say at which point those will be pushed more forward, or I will back off and work together to meet the needs of the full city versus my area that I represent. Each and every decision, each and every plan, each and every budgeted item is a discussion that needs to take place, and so it would be short-sighted to say, this is time I will do this, and this time I will do this. Each one needs a fair look and a fair discussion, and then I would make my determination based on my background, experience, and training, and determine how I would push or back off at that point.
All right, well, thank you for those answers. We're going to be moving to question number two, which is Mayor Protam Charles Grimm.
What do you believe are the highest priority projects in the community of Pasco?
Right now, I would say, infrastructure-wise, making sure that we have a plan for water in the future. I understand that our water system might be at a certain age where we have to start looking at either building a new water tower or investing in the one that we have. We can't grow, we can't support what's going on in our city if we can't guarantee water every time someone turns on their tap or does the flush. So, it's our job to make sure that that's there. That's one of the first things I would want to look into as a new council member. I would also want to make sure that we are meeting the needs from a public safety standpoint. We want to make sure that our citizens are safe. We can't be a good, growing city if citizens don't feel safe here, so that would be from a public safety, police, and fire standpoint. The next thing that I think needs a lot of attention is retail. It appears to me, as a fairly new member to the community, my wife and I have lived here two years now, that a lot of retail exists in Kennewick and Richland, but there's not a lot of solid retail in Pasco in a comparison of the three. That's looking at it from a new person's standpoint. So, that, those will be my main focuses of coming on board.
All right, thanks for coming in, Mr. Jones, appreciate it.
All right, thank you for that. We're going to move on to question number three, which is Councilwoman Blanche Ross.
Thank you, and I just want to say thank you for participating and wanting to be involved in your community at this level. What have you observed in areas of improvement for the City of Pasco? What do you think we need to do better, or we are not doing at all?
Can I get the question rephrased, ma'am? Are you asking me what do I think right now needs to be done better in the City of Pasco? Is that the question?
Correct. What is it that we're doing or not doing for the City of Pasco, or if you feel that there's something that we could do better?
Okay, thank you, I understand. Again, from a new person's standpoint, lived here two years, one of the things I think we need to do more of is take a look at our speeding that's going on throughout the community. It seems like we have a tremendous amount of traffic going on, and it seems like a lot of those people like to drive really fast, and I think we need to take a closer look at that, and I'm sure that's being done, I'm sure that's not an aha moment for anybody, but that is certainly something that I see as a new person living here for two years. I believe that's something that certainly needs to be looked at to be done better. I would also say that providing opportunities for the fine arts in our community. We have tremendous recreational opportunities in, for athletics, but we have little to none in the fine arts, and I think that's something that we need to look at as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Let's move on to question number five, which is done by Councilman Leo Peralas. Oh, I, sorry, I skipped, my bad. Question number four, yes, Councilwoman Blaisdell.
Thank you. How would you handle a citizen contact, contacting you with concerns about the actions of a city employee or a policy decision for the city council?
The first thing I would do is listen to what they have to say until they were done talking. I want to make sure that they had a chance to clear their mind and clear their, their heart of what they have to say. Then, I would encourage them to follow the proper procedure that we have, I'm sure there's a complaint policy that the City of Pasco has, and I would ask them to follow that. It's not my job as a city council member to reprimand, to jump into policy or the day-to-day operations of how our departments do their job. We have managers and other things in place to do those things, so I would ask that person to get a hold of the person's manager, or however the structure is in that department, and ask them to share their concern and follow the process that's in place. I, again, I am not elected to be a micromanager of a department, nor would I ever act in that way.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, we'll jump to number five with the Councilman Leo Peralas.
Thank you, Mayor. What special skills or insights do you believe you could bring to the city council? What sets you apart from the other candidates?
I have 14 years of elective experience as a city council member from South Dakota. I served 11 years on the city council in Lead, South Dakota, and then just recently, before we moved here, three years on the city council in Rapid City, South Dakota. Rapid City and Pasco are amazingly similar, both 80,000 people, both have very similar growth situations, both have ethnicity issues and things that go on within their community, both have growth issues, and so it's rather amazing to move here to this wonderful community and have them be so similar. So, we have addressed a lot of the same things. Also, just my, my years of training, like I said, 14 years there, 17 years as a school administrator, I have great amount of training in how to run meetings, how to do proper procedure, how to do the simple things of making motions, how to vote, parliamentary procedure, all of the ways of how we do business. A lot of times, for new council members, that can be a large learning curve which inhibits their ability to be effective. I bring a turnkey operation to the council and will be an effective member almost right off the bat. I've sat on many dices, I know how to do the job, and will be able to be effective almost immediately. I have a bachelor's degree in music education, I have a master's degree in education and administration, and a doctorate degree in education and administration. I know how administration works, and I am ready to bring those skills and talents to the City of Pasco.
All right, well, thank you for that. Let's jump to question number six, which is done by Councilman Peter Harpster.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, for being here this evening. After thorough discussion at a public meeting on a controversial issue, you find yourself on the other side of a majority decision of the council. Tell us how you might react.
I've always taken a stand that once the, once the debate is done, and once the vote is done, it's done. If I've put my best into it, and I believe that my fellow council members have put their best into it, and we've taken the vote, then we have to be grown up enough, we have to be adult enough, and we have to be professional enough to move forward. I don't believe in parking lot meetings, I don't believe in talking behind people's back, I believe that we have to be able to move forward. I've seen many organizations that, when something like that happens, Councilman Harpster, the people who are on the losing side of it, all they do is complain for the next day, week, month, or year, and it hurts the organization, it poisons the organization. And I've been on the losing side of votes before, many of us have, if we've been in this business, and we just have to realize that that one is done, and it's time to move forward to the next one, and not waste our energy on one that is done.
All right, well, thank you for that. So, let's, your final question is going to be done by Mayor Protam Charles Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you again, Mr. Jones. What is your vision for the City of Pasco in the next 10 to 15 years, and what changes will need to be made to make it a better place to live and work?
I believe to make Pasco a better place the next 10 to 15 years. We need to make sure that we have infrastructure for our water distribution and supply to be securely in place. We need to make sure that we've addressed retail, to have more and better retail in place, to have ongoing sales tax base to take care of the needs of the city, because those things go on well after we are gone. We need to make sure that the public safety needs have been met, properly funded, that there's enough fire and police officers in place, and that there's enough structures in place, police and fire departments, to meet those needs, and that there's enough recreational facilities, both athletic and fine arts, to meet the needs of our vast diverse communities. If we address those things and do them well, we will have taken this wonderful community and made it even better for the people that come behind us.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you for your answer, thank you for your time. So, you're more than welcome to sit in the chambers and listen to the other candidates, or whatever you'd like to do.
Thank you all very much. I really appreciate y'all turning to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, good evening. If you want to state your name, and, you know, I know who you are, but...
Yeah, my name is Abel Campos.
All right, well, thank you for that. So, we are going to jump right into the questions. So, based on your research, this is question number one, based on your research, what is your impression of the primary duty of a city council member?
Well, I think the city council obviously is the legislative body of the city. And so it's just making sure that they hear from them and then bring that to the council on that. I also know that they also dedicate different citizens in the city to serve on other commissions and boards to help with that.
All right. Well, thank you for that. Let's jump to 1A. What are your thoughts on balancing the interest of your district and the overall interest of the city as a council member?
Yeah, I think that's a good balance to have. I think on one side, the council member needs to obviously represent their district well and hear them out and be willing to listen to any constituents about, you know, their concerns for their city. But at the same time, they got to come together as a team for the city council and make the decision that's better for the city itself. So I think it's a very important balance, definitely a juggling act that needs to be happy, making sure that they're doing both, listening to the constituents, but also working with everyone else and making sure that the city moves forward in a positive way.
All right. Well, thank you for that. So we're going to jump to question number two, which is going to be done by our very own Mayor Protem Charles Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Campos, for being here this evening and participating. Just throwing your name in the hat for it, too. What do you believe are the highest priority projects in the community of Pasco?
I think there's just so much going on. I mean, just knowing the fact that, you know, by 2038, we're going to continue to grow 40,000, 50,000 people. That in itself, managing that and making sure we're putting everything in place to continue to grow our city is very important. But I think obviously making sure that we continue to develop our businesses and our economic plans in place, making sure that we have housing. I know that serving on the Planning Commission, that was a big deal that we had to, like, kind of look at low and hearing all this, you know, housing and making sure that we provide for that. But I think it's a big task, and I think that that's something that we need to really look forward to, is making sure that we have not only the right housing and the economic plan, but also just making sure even if everything from like traffic and everything else, making sure all those ordinances are in those places that were ready for the population that is to come.
All right. Well, thank you for that. So we are going to move on to question number three, which is done by Councilwoman Blanche Ross.
Councilwoman? Councilwoman? I don't know what I heard.
Oh, no. My whistle a little dry. I'll take some...
My ears are failing. Thank you for participating and wanting to continue working for the city of Pasco. I know you're in the Planning Commission, but this would be a very, very different role. My question to you, what have you observed? What have you seen as areas of improvement for the city of Pasco? What can we do better?
I think that it's just all part of gathering and making sure that we are gathering kind of stakeholders for getting businesses that want to be here, making sure that we're putting all those right ordinances in place and making the system better to go ahead and draw businesses into the community. Also, you know, we got to figure out what we're going to do with the people that are living on our streets and the homeless and unhoused, making sure that we establish some type of programs that we want to make sure to help, either direct or help them as well. I think those are all very important issues that we must address, and knowing that more people are only going to come, I think those are the things that we have to absolutely address and get, make sure that we have that plan.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for that. So let's move on to question number four, which is Councilwoman Blaisdell.
Thank you. How would you handle a citizen contacting you with concerns about the actions of a city employee or a policy decision of the city council?
Yeah, I think that's, you know, depending on what exactly they're saying, but I think it goes back to that previous question of being able to listen to our constituents, making sure that we're providing that ear, how at the same time, making sure that we also represent our staff and making sure that we, you know, depending again on what's going on, making sure that we somewhat defend our staff if it's something that's, you know, not as big a deal, making sure that we do that. But also bringing it back to the city council, again, depending on how big the severity of the issue is, communication, making sure that we are bringing that to the table, talking to the mayor and so forth. But I think also talking to the city, the citizen itself, directing them to the right place as well, whether it's an email or a conversation or directing them to somebody director that needs to do that. So I think just making sure that I'm the liaison of not only listening, but also helping them and direct them to the right place.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for that. So let's move on to question number five with Councilman Leo Peralos.
Thank you, Mayor. What special skills or insights do you believe you could bring to the city council? What sets you apart from the other candidates?
I think that one of the things that I know that I guess kind of pride myself in is just making sure that I have that emotional intelligence to carry on big, serious discussions and situations, but be able to stay calm and collective and patient. Yeah, I think it's one of the things that I kind of really, just think that's one of my biggest strengths. I think the other part is just I'm a team player. I love to do teamwork and to work together and get our hands, you know, dirty and trying to figure out a solution. I'm big on that. Let's figure out a solution. Let's talk about issues. Let's talk about problems, but let's work together and let's figure out a solution to that with that. And so I think those are the two biggest skill sets that I think that I have that I can bring to the city. Did I answer that full question? I want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Well, thank you for that. So let's move on to question number six, which is Councilman Peter Harpster.
Thanks for being here this evening and applying for the position. After thorough discussion at a public meeting on a controversial issue, you find yourself on the other side of a majority decision of the council. Tell us how you might react.
You support it. You absolutely are on the council, and you trust basically the other council members to make a decision. And so as long as I know that, as long as I did my part to represent the voice and my district, and as long as I know that I did that and we discussed it well as a council, then I support the decision of the council, and we make sure that we move forward with that.
All right. Well, thank you for that. So we are going to jump to the final question tonight for you, which is number seven, and this is going to be again by Mayor Protem Charles Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Campos, what is your vision for the city of Pasco in 10 to 15 years, and what changes will need to be made to make it better, to make it a better place to live and work?
Well, I think at 10 to 15 years, we'll be at the 120,000 mark as a city or maybe even more. And so just making sure that we have a productive community where people feel like they are being connected and do that by making sure that we have some economic policies that we... People can find jobs, find a house, and also have gatherings for families to just make sure that support. I think those are going to be the three main things that we want. We want people, and I think we already have it, but we definitely want to continue it, is that people love Pasco, we're Pasco, and let's continue to do that. And so I think the three things that we need to focus on is making sure that businesses are provided opportunity so jobs can continue to come in, housing affordability, making sure to do that, and also people are part of Pasco by just having events and different stuff in the community that we are a part of that.
All right. Well, it looks like you're done then, so thank you for applying. And if you'd like to sit in the audience, enjoy everything it's best.
Thank you for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Well, we know you're the fourth person to present, but please say your name just for the record.
I would be happy to. Hello, my name is Tanya Bowers.
All right. Well, thank you again for taking time out of your evening. Thank you for applying for this position. So we're going to dig right in. So question number one is based on your research, what is your impression of the primary duty of a city council member?
They have to balance the interests of their particular stakeholders with those of the larger city. The city council member also has to make sure they are judicious about the decisions that they have to vote on. Most of the decisions that they make, of course, have to be things that they have listened to multiple parties within their particular district. And then I'm a big believer that listening to multiple viewpoints helps people come up with the best decisions overall. So as a city council member, that is one of the things that we have to make sure that we are accountable. We also have to make sure that we know what the processes are that we must adhere to so that we do not have conflicts of interest that get in the way with decisions that we are responsible for counting votes, for casting votes on.
All right. Well, thank you for that. So I have a part A on my question. So what are your thoughts on balancing the interest of your district and the overall interest of the city as a council member?
I think I just spoke to that. I think it's a very careful balance that one must make. Of course, your actual constituents are the ones who in the end will be making the decision about how fairly, how well you represented them. So of course, I would consider them first. Most people who know me through my professional and my volunteer positions know that I am very open to building relationships with all sorts of people, listening to multiple viewpoints, ensuring that my particular biases don't get in the way of giving them the opportunity to share their particular positions.
Okay. Well, thank you for that answer. So we're going to jump to question number two, and that's going to be done by our very own Mayor Protem Charles Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Bowers, for being here this evening and throwing your name in the hat. What do you believe are the highest priority projects in the community of Pasco?
I actually think that the various goals that you all have created for 24, 25, I think those are spot on. My particular interest would be the financial stability and economic sustainability as well as the character or identity of Pasco as a whole. We are growing. Since I arrived here in 2014, we have been told that our population is expanding. We have to ensure that the things which attracted people to Pasco in the first place, those particular characteristics are preserved as best as we can. So we need to make sure that we do smart planning, but at the same time, give respect to the things that made Pasco the best secret in eastern Washington.
All right. Well, thank you. We're going to have number... Question number three is going to be done by Councilwoman Blanche Ross.
Thank you. I was still reading over my notes. Thank you for participating. Thank you for throwing your hat in the... Back in the game here. My question to you, what have you observed as areas of improvement for the city of Pasco? What do you think we need to improve in?
I definitely think that our downtown is in much better shape than it was when I first got here. Of course, we are really, really grateful to all the business owners who contributed to making our main street, our historic downtown, the vibrant place that it is today. We know that there were some management challenges previously, so I believe that with the city of Pasco being responsible for downtown, once again, things are back on track. So I would say that is one of the improvements that have been made here. I also think the development that's taking place on... In Broadmoor, we finally have Road 100, the exits, working so they aren't the traffic congestion nightmares that they were initially. So I know that as we move further into developing that area, we are going to make sure that that becomes something that is beneficial to the rest of the city.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for that. So we're going to jump to question number four, which is Councilwoman Melissa Blaisdell.
Thank you. How would you handle a citizen contacting you with concerns about the actions of a city employee or a policy decision of the city council?
Contacting me, I'm assuming because they were not happy? Okay. I would want to make sure that if this were the level of conflict of interest being violated or ethically that council member doing something that was untoward or against our responsibilities, our role as city council, that that individual had brought that concern of theirs to the correct authorities, whether it was something that required something to be reported to the police commission or to the city manager or to the city council at large. I would hope that that individual felt safe enough, being able to speak up for themselves if they didn't. I would ensure that there were other avenues for them to be able to share specifically what it was that had happened, and as information were obtained in the form of an inquiry or an investigation that that took place within the appropriate channels.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. So let's move... Jump to question number five, which is going to be done by Councilman Leo Peralos.
What special skills or insights do you believe you could bring to the city council? What sets you apart from the other candidates?
I believe my skill set and my track record. I am someone who has volunteered here in Pasco in multiple ways. Additionally, my work experience is something that which proves that I know how to navigate government on the city, county, state, and federal levels. One of the first things I did when I came here, I volunteered with the Office of Community and Economic Development. I wrote two successful grant applications, one for a survey and two for two properties in East Pasco, which are now on the National Register of Historic Places. So I believe those are some of the things in addition to the time I served as commissioner of the Planning Commission, chair rather, of the Planning Commission, which overlapped with us going into the pandemic. We got through it. We got through stronger. And I believe that those things in addition to information I helped obtain for the MLK Community Center, which is also one of the prior legislative priorities that you all have named, to recognize those who contributed to the development of East Pasco, that just shows that I'm always available and have utilized my skill set, whether that was something on a voluntary... on a volunteer basis, or something that I have been paid to do. You all are aware that my work experience, I started out in the planning space, and then after seeing how politics worked, I decided to go into the diversity, equity, inclusion space to try and get to some of the attitudes that impacted decisions around, around equity. So if you will, between my undergraduate degree in urban studies with programs completed at Columbia Business School, Columbia's School of Architecture, Planning, and Preservation, and my graduate degree in psychology, I would say that I have demonstrated I can be on a council in Los Angeles. I also served on a neighborhood council, was first appointed and then elected. And neighborhood councils were something that the city created to ensure that enough communities had a voice in what ended up happening in terms of city operations. So between those things, time that I have spent working with other agencies, such as the Regional Plan Association, which covers the tri-state area on the east coast, Community Redevelopment Agency, which focuses on blighted areas throughout Los Angeles, I am someone who has worked, been a part of a lot of the negotiations and operations of things that are very similar to what the city council, as well as our colleagues, your colleagues, who you are responsible for overseeing with the city manager and city staff.
All right. So with that, we're going to jump to question number six, by Councilman Peter Harpster.
Thank you for being here this evening, for applying for this position. After thorough discussion at a public meeting on a controversial issue, you find yourself on the other side of a majority decision of the council. Tell us how you might react.
I would most likely ensure that we heard from all viewpoints, and it sounds like in the particular scenario you are describing, we would want to make sure we heard the minority viewpoints as well, even if it seems like the majority position is one that the council is heading towards. As I mentioned before, I have seen and it has been proven that the more viewpoints we take into consideration, the stronger, the better that final solution or outcome will be. So I would make sure that it were voiced. I am also a team player, and the relationships that I have or would have with the other members of the city council would also be important to make sure that those were preserved as well.
All right. Well, thank you for that. So we're going to have our final question, which is going to be done by our Mayor Protim, Charles Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What is your vision for the city of Pasco in 10 to 15 years, and what changes will need to be made to make it a better place to live and work?
So as I was looking at the goals that you all came up with for 2024, 2025, I was on board with them. I think one of the things that we need to make sure is that we don't overcommit ourselves in looking at our budget. We don't want to further eat into our reserve. We can only do as much as we have funds allocated for, so I want to make sure that we stay within budget. As I mentioned earlier, I think Pasco has so much to offer, and I really think that our city identity is something that we can leverage to attract more business, more opportunities here to the city. I also want us to make sure that we are creating enough opportunities so that people who grow up here in our city have the ability to work the jobs that are going to be created in 15 years. I'm so grateful that we have the two new high schools that have just opened up. I also would like us really to think a little bit more about sustainability. We have a lot of industry that's coming in. Thank you so much to the Port of Pasco for this. We want to make sure we have the water and the energy to keep that industry going. And I see us being a city where we can be sure that we have engagement from all members of our community.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. If you'd like to sit down, and I guess we'll jump to number five. I did want to say thank you to all the candidates that showed up. There were some phenomenal answers. Was going to be extremely hard to pick just one. I think my brothers would pick all four, so anyway, but so, yeah, so thank you again. I thought it was excellent by everybody. So with that, we're going to jump to number five, which is our exec session to evaluate the qualifications of candidate for appointment to elective office for RCW 42.30.110, subsection one, subsection H. I'd like to know what the council thinks, how long we're going to need? You think 10 minutes?
Let's start for 10.
Let's start for 10. Hard decision, but let's start for 10, but it'll probably be longer. So anyway, we will be back at 7:07.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I need to join you for just a few minutes in the beginning.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'll be in attendance.
Okay. All right. If we can have a quiet, thank you. We are back from exec session, very lively exec session. And before we have a nomination and a motion, I would like to say that we do really appreciate everybody coming out. This is by far probably one of the most difficult decisions I've ever been part of, as far as a council member, and it was, everybody would do an excellent job. And with that, we actually have some new information from our attorney, Eric Ferguson, so let's have him kind of tell the nuances of what actually is going on and then go for that.
Sure. You bet. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So essentially, this is a very unique situation with this particular council seat because it is a short and full term, so it's not clear yet to what degree or what length the term of the person who assumes this particular position would serve because of the election that will take place, the general election that will take place on November 4th. So with that being said, the thing that just needs to be made clear is that, since all the candidates, and the reason why I'm just clarifying is because originally, the mayor stated that people would be, need to be able to serve until December 31st, and so there's no guarantee that it would be up until December 31st. It could be only till November 25th. So I just want to make sure that all the candidates are aware of that, and knowing that, that they're still comfortable proceeding and going forward. So with that being said, would each of the candidates confirm that that, that works for them? Mr. Cotta?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor, that's great. And where's our other, Mr. Abel? Yep. And then our finally?
Yes.
Okay. Sounds great. Okay, sounds like we're good to go. And yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Well, thank you. So with that, I would like to get a motion by Mayor Protim Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Jill Cotta to council position number four, effective from September 15th, 2025, through potentially December 31st, 2025.
Okay. All right. We have a first by Mayor Protim Grimm and a second by Councilman Harpster. So let's do a roll call on this.
Councilmember Barajas.
Yes.
Councilmember Blaisdell.
Yes.
Councilmember Harpster.
Yes.
Councilmember Peralas.
No.
Councilmember, or Mayor Protim Grimm.
Yes.
And Mayor Milne.
A yes.
So that passes five to one.
All right. So with that, if we could have newly appointed Councilman Cotta come up here, and then we'll also take, we need a five-minute recess? Oh, let's, I guess, I need, what's that? Okay. Well, I guess, let me come down there, and I'll redo that with the losses. Again, this is my first time on this, so.
So repeat after me. I, Jill Cotta, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the constitutional laws of the state of Washington.
I, Jill Cotta, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And all local ordinances, and that I faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the office of councilmember, district four, position number four, for the city of Pasco according to law to the best of my ability, so help me God.
And all local ordinances, and that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the office of councilmember, district number four, position number four, for the city of Pasco according to law to the best of my ability, so help me God.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
And with that, let's take an eight-minute recess, so we can be back here at 7:30. That would give, anybody who wants to take pictures or anything else. Yeah. Take a seat. All right. Thank you. All right. It is 7:30, and we are back. So we are going to move on to our regular city council, regular meeting. And with that, I'm going to roll on to number four, which is the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by rule call, vote as one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by the council members, the item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. Does anybody?
We lost one already?
Looks like he's late to his first meeting already. And Harpster, is that the spot you wanted to be in? Or do you want to be on the end?
Oh, I'm on the end.
Okay. All right. So now that Mr. Cotta is seated, we're going to go for A, which is approval of meeting minutes for September 2nd and September 8th. B is bill and communications approving claims in a total amount of $6,714,032.52, with a write-off totaling $280. We got C, ordinance number 4788, amending PMC section 5.05.170, exemptions related to business license. D is resolution number 4646, change order number four for wastewater treatment plant phase two A construction contract with Apollo. E is resolution number 4647, professional services agreement, amendment number two, with RH2 Engineering Incorporated for design services for the process water reuse facility, irrigation systems, farm upgrades project. And with that, can I get a motion? Mayor Protim Grimm.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Okay.
Okay. So we got a motion by Mayor Protim Grimm. We got a second by Councilwoman Blaisdell. Can I get a roll call?
Councilmember Barajas.
Yes.
Councilmember Blaisdell.
Yes.
Councilmember Cotta.
Yes.
Councilmember Harpster.
Yes.
Councilmember Peralas.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Grimm.
Yes.
And Mayor Milne.
That would be a yes for me as well.
Thank you. It passes unanimously.
Thank you. We're going to move on to five, which is proclamation and acknowledgements. And the first one is 5A, which is, I know, a little controversial, which is a proclamation honoring the life of Charlie Kirk. And now usually, as a council, we don't really do this. I was contacted by other members of the council. I was thinking of more of a moment of silence, but we got, basically, one of the council members thought it would be great to have a proclamation, and I did agree with him. And I guess my choice on that, just because I have got emails about this, is that I love the fact that Charlie Kirk was for free speech, that where he would go, he would have a discussion, and the best part about it was that he would have a discussion and violence wasn't considered an option. To me, it just, it says something about the man that you're going in to areas that most people wouldn't go into, whether for political beliefs or religious beliefs, and having open conversations. So to me, he was an inspiration. I watched a lot of his videos, usually every other day, and again, to me, it was a profound loss when somebody is talking nonviolent interactions, just have a discussion, and with that, the man is basically killed for having a discussion. So it's my decision to do this. Again, I appreciate the support that I've got from council, but it's not, not an easy one, and I know there's people that are against this because of some of the stuff he has believed in, but for me, it's an honor to do this proclamation. So with that, I'm going to read the proclamation. So whereas Charlie Kirk was a founder of Turning Point USA, a national profit, nonprofit organization committed to educating young people about the principles of limited government, free markets, personal responsibilities, and whereas Charlie Kirk boldly proclaimed his faith in Jesus Christ, consistently grounding his public service and civic engagement in biblical values and deep conviction that faith must live out in both private and public life, and whereas Charlie Kirk worked tirelessly to equip a new generation of Americans to think critically, engage civically, and uphold ideals of freedom, family, and faith, and whereas Charlie Kirk believed in the power of civic trust, community involvement, and moral leadership to strengthen democracy, and whereas Charlie Kirk's life was tragic and felt short when he was assassinated while engaging in dialogue with college students, an act that shocked the nation and underscored the growing need for civil discourse, mutual respect, and the protection of those who speak boldly in matters of conscience and truth, and whereas despite his untimely death, Charlie's enduring legacy lives on through the lives of those he inspired to serve in their communities, engage those around them, and stand firm in their convictions. And whereas the city of Pasco joins communities across the country in mourning this profound loss and a recognized impact of Charlie's voice, leadership, and unwavering devotion to truth, and therefore, I, David Milne, mayor of city of Pasco, Washington, do hereby proclaim September 15th, 2025, as a day of honor to life of Charlie Kirk, and urge all residents to reflect on Charlie's legacy of faith, freedom, and service, and to recommit ourselves to these founding values. Thank you. So with that, we're going to move on to 5B, which is a proclam-
Would it be all right if I made a comment?
Yes, please do.
Yeah. The, same as you mentioned, you know, the, who would people take away from this and from his life is the courage to have conversations with people that we disagree with. And, and at the end of those conversations, you may still disagree, but you've at least had a conversation, respected that other person as a human being, you know, another person. And, I mean, as I look out in the crowd here, I've met many of these people out here, and many of us disagree on many things, but we've had conversations about it, and there's a lot that we do agree on that we found, and there's, you know, items we found that we're just going to disagree on, and, and that's fine. And when I was running for city council, I reached out to all the council members at that time, just to hear their thoughts on council and priorities and whatnot. And those who maybe think differently politically than me, Ms. Barajas, to my left, here was the only one who got together with me to discuss priorities, and we found in that conversation, there's a lot we disagree on. But we sit here every week and find that there is a lot that we do agree on, and I respect Ms. Baros for her willingness to serve on council and to keep showing up, and I hope she does the same for me. And again, we get together pretty frequently and have discussions that aren't fun to have. They're sometimes difficult discussions, but we work towards finding common ground. And what's cool to see is, you know, Fiery Foods Festival this past weekend, she ran to my family and gave my wife a hug, said hi to my boys. They were excited. to my family and gave my wife a hug, said hi to my boys, they were excited to see her. That's the result of having conversations instead of saying, we disagree, so we're not going to talk. And again, the, you know, the irony of the open dialogue is everybody's going to have the opportunity this evening to share their opinions on us perhaps, and again, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, I know we're not going to agree, but I just really hope that, that people see what happened and that that would embolden them to not be silenced, but to seek out people that they have disagreements with. And again, you may not win somebody to your side, but it's still so important, in my opinion, to have that conversation anyways. Thanks.
Thank you for those words. I could say, being on the council, I agree with you wholeheartedly, there's just times where you disagree with other members, and but you know, it's for the best of Pasco that we get along, we try to work things out, and you try to hear different voices and different opinions. So again, the whole Charlie Kirk thing, it was a profound loss to me that his life was taken so young with the family and all the stuff that he was trying to let people be aware of, and again, to try to make America a better place. So with that, we're going to move on, so with that, we're going to move on to 5B, which is a proclamation declaring National Hispanic Heritage Month, and we are actually going to kick it off with Councilwoman Ross.
Rules say that you start with public comment and then you do public business.
No, we, public comment, please sit down, public comment is coming up, it's coming up on the agenda.
Beginning of the meeting.
We, no, it's coming up, we are running the meeting here, if you could sit down, please, you will give your chance for three minutes to talk.
It's just you're violating your own rules.
No, it's on our agenda, we have an agenda, we have an agenda, not run by you. With that, Councilwoman Ross, can you please give your proclamation?
I'm not sure if you have the proclamation in English, someone should read it in English first.
Let's go with Councilman Leo Peralas for the English version.
Thank you much. This is a proclamation on National Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th through October 15th, 2025, whereas America's cultural diversity has helped strengthen and define our country for hundreds of years, and whereas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, we recognize the millions of Hispanic Americans whose love of family, hard work, and community have helped unite us as a people and sustain us as a nation, and whereas we remember also those proud Hispanic American patriots who fought and died for our country in every war and conflict since our founding, and whereas as entrepreneurs and public servants, scholars and artists, Hispanic Americans have provided wisdom, energy, and leadership in both small and large communities across the country, and whereas while many Hispanic Americans today are thriving, others are still struggling to overcome obstacles, including language and cultural barriers, and whereas we renew our commitment to ensuring that all Hispanic Americans have access to the opportunities needed to pursue and realize their dreams, and whereas the 2025 theme, collective heritage honoring the past, inspiring the future, encourages us to recognize the spirit of innovation, resilience, and unity that defined the Hispanic experience and honors the visionary leaders within the Hispanic community whose trailblazing efforts have paved the way for more inclusive and prosperous society, and now therefore, Mayor Pasco, David Milne, and the rest of the council do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2025 as Hispanic Heritage Month.
Thank you. And now will Councilwoman Ross read that in Spanish?
Thank you. I do have a couple comments before that. I will be reading the proclamation in Spanish, it's very important for our viewers, our Spanish viewers, every Mexican-American in the city of Pasco, in recognition that there's 56% of the population of Pasco are Latino or Hispanic natives. We are a proud group. Tomorrow, September 16th, is Mexican Independence Day, making Mexico's liberation from Spain in 1810. Not sure if anybody knew that, but I'm just throwing out that little tidbit. So to my fellow Mexican-Americans, to Chicanos, however you want to identify yourselves, Feliz Dia de la Independencia Mexicana. And I will proceed to read the proclamation. We were just talking about proclamations, and I want to recognize that, we just read a proclamation, right, in regards to the life of an individual that was unfortunately a victim of a crime. However, we should also recognize Senator Melissa Hortman and her husband for being killed. Irina Sarutskaya from Ukraine for also being killed. The students at Evergreen High School and the students at the Enunciation Catholic School in those shootings, there was not many killings, but there were killings of young people, children, unnecessary killings, just like Mr. Kirk's. However, I feel that local government should aim to keep our streets safe, to focus on local matters. May they all rest in peace. And with that, I will follow through with the proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month in Spanish. For all of you listening, todos los que están escuchando, el mes nacional de la herencia hispana, 15 de septiembre a 15 de octubre del 2025. Considerando que la diversidad cultural de América ha ayudado a fortalecer y a definir nuestro país por cientos de años. Considerando durante el mes nacional de la herencia hispana, reconocemos a los millones de hispanoamericanos cuyo amor por la familia, el trabajo duro, y la comunidad han ayudado a unirnos como pueblo y sostenernos como una nación. Y considerando que también recordamos a aquellos orgullosos patriotas hispanoamericanos quienes lucharon y murieron por nuestro país en cada guerra y conflicto desde nuestra fundación. Y considerando que como empresarios y funcionarios públicos, estudiantes y artistas, los hispanoamericanos han proporcionado sabiduría, energía, y liderazgo en comunidades pequeñas y grandes a lo largo del país. Considerando que aunque muchos hispanoamericanos han prosperado hoy en día, otros aún están luchando para vencer obstáculos incluyendo el idioma y las barreras culturas. Considerando que renovamos nuestro compromiso para asegurarnos que todos los hispanoamericanos tengan acceso a las oportunidades necesarias para perseguir y realizar sus sueños. Y considerando el tema del 2025 herencia colectiva honrando el país inspirando el futuro nos alienta a reconocer el espíritu de la innovación, resiliencia, y unidad que definen la experiencia hispana. Y honra a los líderes visionarios dentro de la comunidad hispana cuyos esfuerzos pioneros han abierto el camino hacia la sociedad más inclusiva y próspera. Feliz día de la independencia a todos los mexicoamericanos.
All right, and thank you, Councilwoman Ross. I'm sorry, hold a second, I just wanted to say thank you for pointing that out, I did have it in my notes. Do recognize the other ones, I did miss it, I am sorry, but thank you for saying that. And so let's go to Councilman Grimm.
Thank you, oh, you're fine, Mr. Mayor, thank you. No, and just to add on to what my fellow councilmember was saying, I don't know if a lot of people realize this, but just reading from the internet here, we can't quite claim it as Pasco, but we're the lion's share of the population in Franklin County, but Pasco, or excuse me, Franklin County became the first majority Hispanic county in the entire Pacific Northwest around 2006, and I think that is something we should be very proud of. Can't quite claim it as a city, but obviously, we're like, what, 85% of the whole county, so I think that is something to be proud of, thank you.
All right, well, thank you for that, so let's, and let's go to Councilman Peralas.
Quick comment, so I just want to address what happened earlier, bodies, we have our schedules and stuff, they're available on the internet at our website, but if you look at our passcode, I'm just going to address Mr., the individual who came up here, we have an on our website here, you can see right here, it lays out our agenda or order of business, and so we weren't skipping over anything, it says right here, meeting instructions, remote access, goes call to order, rule call, pledge of allegiance, consent agenda, proclamations and acknowledgements, and after that is public comments. So I just want to make sure that, I don't want anyone making comments or post that we're not following our own rules and stuff, but that clears it laid out right there, thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilman Peralas. So now we're going to move on to public comments. The public may address council on any items unless it relates to a scheduled public hearing. This item is provided to allow the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the posing of questions with the expectation of immediate response. Some questions require considerations by council over time, and after a deliberative process with input from a number of different sources, some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will normally be limited to three minutes each by the mayor, those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. Lastly, when called upon, please state your name and city or county residency into the microphone before providing your comments. And with that, we have a list of people that are, have signed up to speak, so let's start off with, first we'll go off with Michelle Andrews. And again, we're going to go three minutes, make sure the timer is on.
Michelle? Okay. Hello? Michelle Andrews, Pasco, Washington. Congratulations, Mr. Cotta, I hope you do well. I do want to address that all of us have strong emotions, and emotions are real. They're not always reality. If you miss someone and you said, hey, I missed you, I didn't hear from you, why didn't you write? That person doesn't know if you're saying that in a sad manner or in an angry manner. I do want to give people the room to grieve a beautiful life. It was not worth taking his life. It wasn't worth taking the Ukrainian girl's life. I used to be an admissions counselor for a college and a teacher. Students are very impressionable, and every single adult needs to lead those emotions in a positive direction as much as possible. And I call on my city because I came here 17 years ago and I felt like I moved back to Boise, Idaho, I had not felt at home in such a long time. I love this city and I love this county. Please love one another, it pays off. And even if you disagree and didn't want us to say an amen or not, I love you. I care about your feelings.
Hey, Michelle, can you?
Thank you.
We can't hear you, so, okay.
Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to say, thank you.
All right, thank you. Just moving forward, if everybody could approach the dais as far as face up, so we could actually hear you better, would be appreciated. So let's, next we got Steve Wilson.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Thank you. My name's Steve Wilson from Pasco. Congratulations, new guy. Pasco was created as a city manager form of government. This was after World War I, that actually started in the United States in Ohio around This was set up to stop the political machines from setting up governments for one political party as an abuse of a spoils system from the war and related industries. And it requires an impartial city manager, we have one, right, Mr. Stewart? Thank you. It has proven to be an effective system of local government by restricting partisan government and offering more equitable and fair representation. Now, let me explain to you what partisan influence has done to my area here, my city, my county. Right now, we have a county commissioner system that's overloaded with right-wing extremists, they have done as much to run out their peers and professionals from that, from their department, they disgraced an honorable sheriff, they can't manage Hapo. That's been around since it was, 80s, came in the 80s as TRITech, or it was, but it was to be proud of. People would come from the region, all around the region, to come to our ag facility. Who lives here and will build an ag facility without air conditioning? And then put themselves in a situation where they can't afford it, and then work with people from out of state and owe them money, and yet have the grapes to turn around and belittle a sheriff for a lunch bill? Or to tell him that he's got hidden cameras looking in secret areas of the courthouse?
If you get a face up.
Sorry about that. I get a little fired up about that. What I recommend is we do not interact with them regarding Hapo Center, let them dig their hole. My dad and I talked yesterday, he said, my big brother called me, they're in their 70s, freaking out about this news, about the liberals are going to get all shot or something, they're freaking out. I'm like, I don't know what's going on with that. So I looked into it, I see this guy's an influencer, I'm not connected, I can only assume since your municipality that deals with our local people, that he's from Pasco. That must be the case. Or he has influence in Pasco, or he's helped anything with the municipality of Pasco, that would make sense. So I'm assuming that's the case, I'm going to look into this and see if it is the case. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments, we're going to jump down to Eileen Crawford.
Thank you for your time, Eileen Crawford, city of Pasco. Congratulations, Joe. I'm here to talk to you about an article I read in the Tricycle Herald regarding $50 additional car tab fees. Is that going to go on motorcycles, RVs, et cetera? Need I remind you, Pasco is a very low Kappa income, per Kappa incomes, city. We don't have that kind of money, all right? Have you looked at other options? I found it interesting that one of the councilmembers was supporting a 0.01% sales tax. Well, at least that would capture everybody that shops in Pasco. If I don't want to pay your fee, I'm going to transfer my tags out of Pasco. All right? Are you going to charge everybody that drives across the city limits and uses our streets, which are in bad need of attention, I'll admit, a fee for driving on them? Because you're charging us for their privilege. Have you looked at, because of EVs, better gas mileage, have you looked at putting this extra fee on EVs or hybrids only? What about the charging stations? Let's charge them too. The city is not responsible to support businesses that compete with private business or things that don't involve our health and safety. So let's re-inspect those, all right? I wonder, and I'm asking, the Grand Ole Fourth of July, Cinco de Mayo, Fiery Food Festival, movies in the park during the summer, is the city supporting those with our taxpayer dollars? Well, you're going to tax us for more and more. Maybe what you ought to do is start taxing, if you pass this, start taxing U-Hauls while we move out. Because that's what's going to happen, okay? This is not Olympia. You were all elected by the people to represent the people first and the city of Pasco second. So start representing us and our pocketbooks. No more tax and spend, please. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that, Mrs. Crawford. Normally, we don't interact, I mean, if you could, please sit down, but I did want to say that all of our, I mean, every member here does not like taxes. We also don't like roads with potholes in them either, and you need roads, I mean, again, that's a big thing, and I can tell you that there basically is no secret meetings, we haven't even voted on this, we still have a couple more months, we're willing to hear from people, we want to hear from our constituents. So I'm saying, with that in mind, again, even though I had leaning one way, I'm still open, I think every councilman is open, to seeing what is best for Pasco, hearing people's ideas, moving forward on this, but let's come up with a way, if we can, to have better roads, but at the same time, not bankrupt the city budget, you know, alls we want is to keep things.
And this mayor and this city council thinks that's not enough. You've got to go on top of that. The voters in Franklin County, 72% of them, said, we don't want taxes or fees above $30. Jay Inslee said voters were confused by that. The mayor and the city council agree with them. Because here you are doing exactly the same thing that he did, not respecting the will of the people. When you say you're going to have a meeting starting at 7:00, and I tell 60,000 people to tune in to watch, and you don't start listening to people until 7:50, you're not even following your own rules. When I did this in front of the Seattle City Council, they were just as bad. But that's Seattle. You're acting exactly like the Seattle mayor, exactly like the Seattle City Council, where you put it off as long as you could, you had already made your decision, and all they were doing is just biding time, hoping that people would get tired and walk out. On August 25th, you guys had a secret meeting that nobody knew about, that it took the Tri-City Herald a week and a half to eventually write a story about. And here it is 21 days later, and this is the first chance where regular citizens can actually comment on it. But at that meeting, you all weren't debating whether or not to do it, you all decided you're going to do it. We only want to know, are you going to raise sales taxes? Are you going to raise car tab taxes? You weren't debating whether or not to do it, you just said, we're doing it, but which one should we do? And you all expressed which ones you wanted. You skipped the whole part about when you normally make decisions, you're supposed to actually listen to citizens, make an announcement, let the Tri-City Herald do a story before the meeting about it. You didn't do that here. It was so maddening to hear you skipping past the whole citizen comment portion. But let's talk about how that's a joke too. Because you already know the voters don't want this. You already know they can't afford it, but you're doing it anyway. Now, you say that you're only going to make final decisions later. That's not what happened on August 25th, and it infuriated me. Because I was watching you skip past everything, supposedly a conservative city council, supposedly a conservative mayor, acting exactly the way Seattle does. Now, $40 billion in one legislative session from Democrats. We come to expect that. But when we have supposed conservatives saying $40 billion isn't enough, let's go above that. Let's go higher than that. Let me close with this. 25 years ago, when we passed this one, just a couple of years ago, 72% of them voted for it. This was the sign in 1999, 26 years ago. The slogan was, because politicians will never limit taxes. True today, 26 years later, as it was back then, you will never limit taxes. It is infuriating that you're doing this, and you're doing it before you've even listened to the people. It infuriates me. I hate it, and I'm really pissed off about it. Thank you.
All right. So the next one is, we have, yeah, usually we don't do it, but in this case, we'll have Mayor Pro Tem Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make a point of clarification that in that meeting, from what I understand, you don't comment, you don't actually go back and forth, the whole idea of public comment is we get to talk, and then you guys listen.
We are on the council. You need to sit down, or you'll be removed.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to make a point of a clarification. On YouTube, at the 155 32nd mark, the public is indeed asked to provide input, and it is. And then Councilwoman Barajas asks a follow-up question, and then our deputy city manager actually even goes through the process and explains the process, how there has to be public hearings in all of this. And then you, again, go back and ask a second and a third time for public comment. So to come up and say that public comment wasn't taken that night is factually untrue, or that public comment hasn't happened at these meetings since then is factually untrue, and it's outrageous to even suggest that. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's move on to Anna Roos Kennedy.
Thank you. Good evening, council. My name is Anna Roos Kennedy, and I'm here as the Chair of Franklin County Democrats. I want to begin, we just witnessed, congratulations for your appointment. We just witnessed your swearing-in ceremony, and we also just witnessed not following your own process. You have a proclamation process. It says here that you have to have a request submitted 30 days prior, and you didn't follow that. So just reminding you to follow your own process. You are breaking, you know, you're making everybody break your own laws, and then you said precedent, that's very dangerous, okay? But now you did it, and I would like to encourage you. I did this publicly right away after we've heard the tragic passing of Mr. Kirk, or assassination of him. And I said that we condemn all forms of violence, including the assassination of Mr. Kirk and the targeting of all political leaders for their beliefs. This kind of despicable violence has no place in our democracy. I respectfully ask that this resolution be expanded to also honor the memory of other political leaders who have been assassinated. Leaders across the political spectrum, from Martin Luther King Jr., President John F. Kennedy, to more recent figures like Representative Melissa Hortman, her husband Mark, and others. These tragedies are not just political losses, they are human losses. They affect families, communities, and the very fabric of our democracy. By recognizing all victims of political violence, we send a powerful message that our community values every voice stands united against hate and beliefs in civil discourse over division. Let this resolution be a bridge, not just in mourning, but in hope and shared purpose. As Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Justice anywhere is threat to justice everywhere." Thank you for your time and for your commitment to community, unit, and justice. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Jennifer Henley.
Good evening, Mayor and the city council members. I want to thank you for this opportunity. I've never actually spoke before to any council, so I appreciate the opportunity. I am here tonight, though, to share my concerns with the decision to make the special proclamation about the death of Mr. Kirk. I first want to say that, number one, anyone celebrating the death of anyone is deplorable. I don't care who they are and if they agree or disagree with me in any way. Second, everyone has a right to mourn someone that they are upset about the death of, but this group is not a person. You guys represent the entire city of Pasco, and some of those people, as you said, receiving emails, disagree with the decision. By making a specific proclamation about a podcaster, when only today and due to the outrage of your community, did you recognize federal government officials who were assassinated actually three months and one day ago? My understanding, there was no proclamation prior to the outrage that began over tonight's proclamation. The racially filled comments made by Mr. Kirk, as well as the programs he supported and his comments about women, create a divisive environment and do not make me feel supported by the officials in a city that I've lived in for almost 20 years. I hope in the future, the council will be more cautious and more inclusive with these proclamations. And lastly, as public comment was not made available prior to the proclamation, and the fact that in the proclamation, mutual respect was cited and should be gleaned from Mr. Kirk, I do feel it's important, and I do apologize ahead of time to anyone this might offend, but I do want to actually share some of his words. This is from July 13, 2023 Charlie Kirk Show. Black women do not have the brain processing power to otherwise be taken really seriously. You had to go steal a white person's slot to be taken somewhat seriously. I do not see how that shows mutual respect and does not create divisiveness. I hope in the future, again, that more thought will be put into these proclamations, like the one that was made tonight, and that all those who live in Pasco feel supported. Thank you.
Thank you for your words. So we're going to move on to Andrea Luther. Oh, Andrea, I'm sorry. Can't hear you.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Luther. I'm from Pasco. I wanted to share my concerns about the proclamation honoring Charlie Kirk. First, every life lost is tragic, and every death deserves to be mourned. We can absolutely extend compassion to Mr. Kirk's family and his supporters without elevating him with an official city proclamation. Mr. Milney, you claimed he was a great debater and a voice for free speech. I would like to invite you to come volunteer your time with the Pasco School Debate Clubs so that you can learn what a great debater actually looks like. He's not. Pasco is one of the most diverse cities in Washington, and our proclamations in Pasco should unite our residents. Honoring a national political figure whose works and statements who have been openly partisan risks dividing our community. If the city would not issue a similar proclamation for a leader with very different political views, such as Minnesota Rep. Melissa Hortman, which it had not until tonight, when it was amended, who have been victims of political violence, it is inconsistent and inequitable to issue one here. I urge the council to focus future proclamations on shared values and local contributions rather than on national political figures whose legacies are rooted in divisive advocacy. We can mourn a death without exalting someone like this. And I do have a whole list of statements that he has made, if anyone would like one.
Why don't you give it to the clerk? All right, thank you for those words. We're going to go on to...
Teresa?
Teresa?
I didn't realize that was I could speak.
Okay, all right. All right, well, we will move on to Steve Simmons.
My name is Steve Simmons, Pasco resident. I just wanted to speak to the proposed tax increases. So Pasco families are already stretched thin. If you didn't notice, we just saw a gas tax go up because of a failed carbon tax that hasn't delivered yet. And now the city wants to raise taxes again. The truth is that Pasco hasn't done well in long-term planning, and instead has asked us for more. The city should be accountable with the money it already collects. And as President Reagan reminded us, the problem is not that people are taxed too little, the problem is that government spends too much. So we need smarter spending and not higher taxes. So, thank you.
All right. Steve Simmons. It looks like we have some, is there anybody else? Mr. Miloney?
I think it's already on. It's on?
Yeah.
Mary Mahoney, Pasco resident, to Pasco via RCW 42.56. How much are we, the taxpayers, paying for the Pasco Aquatic Center? See aquatic director and former Pasco mayor Matt Watkins and/or his LLC for his Wow Factor wave machine that can cost anywhere from $22 million to $280 million, with each wave costing as much as $12.75 per second. Who can afford that? Include a total for Mr. Watkins' salary of nearly $11,000 per month, plus his travel expenses. Include passport entries, anticipated expenses, and complication costs. Pasco taxpayer-funded CIP budget is well over a half a billion dollars. How much is going for a low-barrier homeless shelter for our people and for a low-cost spay-neuter clinic for our dogs and cats? Currently, it's at zero. See the spokesman review on 9/9/25. Quote, "From 1975, the Spokane City Council was taking more heat over its policy to sell stray dogs to Washington State University Veterinary School," end quote. Tri-City Animal Services, TCA, CS, or Animal Control, has had a contract with WSU to send our dogs and cats for research since April 16 of 2003. Tri-City Animal Services has no spay-neuter services and still denies due process protections, still performs botched, cruel, and barbaric euthanasia methods, and now issues fines with the usage pay system, which puts a bounty on our dogs and cats. Which neighborhoods do they attack there? And still, for over 22 years, continues to send our dogs and cats to WSU for research, where they linger and then are killed. Tri-City Animal Services is catch-and-kill or send them to WSU. Horrendous. This authorized by Pasco City Attorney Lee Kerr and approved by council. See Pasco City Council Meeting 4119. Provide the video. Provide all past and present ULID and LID designs for my property with start dates, costs, and the US mail notice to me. Include all Pasco officials and Pasco employees' communications regarding harassment and retaliation against me and my property. Include a permit number 404 for the floodplain sewer system and for the Road 48 community park. Include fecal groundwater reports caused by the broken floodplain sewer system. Also include fines paid by Pasco and spot zoning developers Hayden Homes for killing our eight floodplain American bald eagles and their eaglets. See KNDU News on Earth Day 4/19/22, alerting the city regarding our floodplain eagles before Hayden Homes and Pasco killed them. My comments are for the record, my requests are for the record, and to put Pasco on notice.
All right, thank you for that. Is there anybody else in the audience that hasn't spoken that would like to speak? Going once, going twice, going three times, and then we have some callers that have been patiently waiting to speak. So I think we're going to go with the first one, Lori Lane.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name's Lori Lane, and I'm from Buckley, Washington. I, too, am concerned when I hear about tax increases, because this is just a terrible time for that. That's why the 1% property tax cap was passed in the first place, so that we could have, as voters, be able to afford to stay in our homes. To me, I have a question. How can anybody trust somebody, trust you guys, when you secretly pass taxes without the voters' consent? I would think that would tend to do quite the opposite. Honestly, what I believe needs to happen here is that there needs to be a tax diet. And you just need to learn to stay within, live on a budget, true budget, and just say no. Thank you.
All right, thank you for those words. Just so you know, we haven't passed anything, so we're still discussing it. But let's go on to, oh, Myla Mapson? Mapson? Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, you might want to speak up a little bit more, but we can hear you.
Okay, I'll try to talk loud. Hello, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Malia Mapson, and I am a resident of Pasco, Washington. I'm here this evening with a concern of a proposed gas station, convenience store, and car wash development on parcel number 115502085 and parcel number 115502086. This land is on the corner of Sanford Parkway and Road 90, right next to Broadmore Terrace, which is where I live. The proposal for this gas station is less than 100 yards from my front door. So I was notified this weekend by just walking by a sign that was posted, it was about the size of a paper. And you just need to learn to stay within, live on a budget, true budget, and just say no. Thank you.
All right, thank you for those words. Just so you know, we haven't passed anything, so we're still discussing it. But let's go on to... Oh, Myla Mapson? Mapson? Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, you might want to speak up a little bit more, but we can hear you.
Okay, I'll try to talk loud. Hello, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Malia Mapson, and I am a resident of Pasco, Washington. I'm here this evening with a concern of a proposed gas station, convenience store, and car wash development on parcel number 115502085 and parcel number 115502086. This land is on the corner of Sanford Parkway and Road 90, right next to Broadmore Terrace, which is where I live. The proposal for this gas station is less than 100 yards from my front door. So I was notified this weekend by just walking by a sign that was posted, it was about the size of a paper, by the mailbox, that said that this gas station is... There was a proposal for this gas station, and that we had, the community had, until the 22nd of this month, to write any comments or speak regarding the opposition of it. I have a viewpoint, so I think I'm concerned because of the increased traffic, and this will worsen congestion, make crossings dangerous, especially for our children and for our families walking, biking. The safety of our children and our family from the gas station noise, the light pollution, the fuel leaks, chemical runoffs that could threaten our soil and our groundwater. A huge concern of mine is possible loitering and homelessness around our children and our property value. Decrease in our property value, which I believe is improper taking of property value. We have four other gas stations within one mile of my home. This will be the fifth added, and so I'm wondering what... Why? What is the reasoning for the need for our community? I think the responsibility of the city government is to make decisions with the established community for safety and cultural development in mind, and I don't believe that this fifth gas station across the street from my home supports that responsibility. I leave you with two questions. First, what would you do if you got notification that a gas station was going across the street from your home? And the reason of why this would be important for our community to have? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We much appreciate it. Do we have anybody else online that... All right, so with that, we're going to move on to number seven, which is reports from committees and/or offices. So do we have any... Let's start off with Councilwoman Blaisdell.
Well, I'm going to change the atmosphere in here because this weekend we had a really good fiery food festival. We had a really good turnout. There was some amazing food, amazing entertainment. It seemed like everyone in Pasco was there. We had the pepper challenge, we had the wing challenge. Brian, I think, won the wing challenge. And Sergeant Park participated in the wing challenge. He had some tacos before the wing challenge, so he didn't get through all 20 of his wings. But it was a really, really fun event. I stayed pretty much all day. The weather was good. And then today, I also went to the recovery graduation. September is recovery month, and today they had a gentleman that I believe has been clean for over a year, and he graduated from recovery graduation. And it was a really neat experience to listen to his story. There was other community elected officials there. Commissioner Baumann was there. Detective Lee was there, and she presented him with a challenge coin. And it's just really a good feeling to watch someone change their life after having a... Basically, being addicted to drugs after a long road. So that was really... It was really, I guess, just... It's a good feeling to see someone turn their life around. So I appreciated that today.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman Blaisdell. We're going to jump to Councilwoman Harpster.
Thank you. I did attend TriDex Donuts and Development I spoke about last week, and discussion was around housing in the area and the increased supply, but also the increased days on market and the challenges that's presenting, not only for brokers in the area, but for builders and buyers and sellers as well. And again, I was with Rep. Connors and HBA and Tri-City Association of Realtors. Met with Kara, I think her last name is pronounced Kaye Blurr, something like that, with the Franklin Conservation District. She presented to us about a month ago, it was at a meeting that I missed. And I had a good discussion with her. Next week, I'll bring back a couple items during miscellaneous discussion to talk about, including my favorite topic of Shrupp step mitigation. And we discussed that and how the city can partner with them on a couple different issues that they're dealing with. And then, as Ms. Blaisdell mentioned, did attend Fiery Foods Festival. I don't know if it's just because your memory as a kid gets twisted when you get older, but as a kid going to Fiery Foods Festival, it felt like it was just this enormous, huge thing, and got a little small during COVID and all that. But it feels like year over year, it keeps growing and growing. This year felt like, the first year, there was like really back post-COVID. And so thanks to Mr. Rice and his team, and really a lot of staff that spent a lot of their weekend time there. I know that Ms. Igdel and Mr. Stewart were both there, and so appreciate you guys doing that. My family and I had a great time, so that was it. Thanks.
All right, well, thank you for that report. Let's go to Mayor Protem Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the new vintage church elected official ribbon cutting. I had to be there a little early because of another obligation to go watch a kid play a soccer game, but I was able to get there half an hour early. Congratulate Pastor Matt, pray with him, and I appreciate him making time before his big event to do that. I also attended the Benton Franklin Transit meeting last Thursday, where they announced their Employees of the Year and also their Department of the Year. And I don't know if you guys watched their videos online, but Brittany and some others on that team in the marketing department are doing a fantastic job of just really reflecting the values of Benton Franklin Transit and promoting the image of BFT and just having a lot of fun doing it, too. So that was great. And then also, they gave a report on the Benton Franklin Fair and Rodeo Ridership, and ridership was way up. I remember being at that meeting last year. If my memory serves me correct, like from our 22nd Avenue Station, ridership was down 6%, but this year, I think it was in the teens or almost 20%, ridership was up, just from our one station here in Pasco. So that was encouraging. And then, like others, I was down at Fiery Foods Festival. I'm the one with the big family, so got to bless one of our local vendors by walking up and asking for 21 tacos, to which they're like, "Are you serious?" And I kind of turned around and pointed to my group that I love very much. And so, yeah, had a great time down there and supporting our vendors and just being a part of the community. So thank you.
Thank you for that report. Mayor Protem Grimm, let's go back to Councilwoman Blaisdell.
Sorry, I forgot, one more thing. I also filled in for the mayor at the Kohler Estates Phase 2 ribbon cutting. It is in the middle of the, I want to say country, but technically it's not the country anymore, but it's so quiet and peaceful out there. So there is some, I believe there's about 20 lots available for purchase, so it's definitely worth driving out there to look at the lots available if you're thinking about buying a house.
Well, thank you for filling in for me. I do appreciate it. I had a busy week as well, but to summarize for the amount of time we have, I did attend the Park and Rec Advisory Board meeting, and we had a long discussion on the aquatic center, got an update by former mayor Matt Watkins. And I will say that there is no wave pool. I've gone over the plans a couple times, very specific. So maybe at one time it was a discussion, but there is no $22 million wave pool with $100,000 per wave. And I did attend the Fiery Foods along with the rest of the council, and it was really cool to see everybody there. And I did want to join in with... I saw our Councilwoman Leo Peralis eating the hot peppers. I thought of my time up there, but I was glad that somebody from the council was able to dig in and sad that he didn't win first prize, but it looked like quite the competition, a lot of folks. And so, again, it was good to have a good time and talk to constituents. So with that, I think we're going to move on. And let me get back to my spot here. All right, so we're going to move on to eight, which is hearing and council action on ordinance and resolutions related thereto. I'm not seeing anything. So we're going to move on to number nine, ordinance and resolutions not related to hearings. We've got number A, which is Resolution Number 4649, setting a public hearing to consider Fat Beam franchise extension. And this is going to be by Director Maria Sarah.
Good evening, mayor and council members. This item proposes to set the public hearing for the renewal of this fiber optic franchise for Fat Beam for October 6 at 7:00 p.m. during a regular council meeting. This is a renewal. Again, this is governed by municipal code Title 1440... Sorry, 1540. And it does qualify under general components of that title. And with that requirement, for this renewal is to have the public hearing. No action is anticipated on that night. It's just a public hearing. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does any of the council have questions for Director Maria Sarah? Or Councilwoman Brahas?
Quick question. This is, as I'm reading this, down at the discussion portion, it says, "Before considering franchise renewal." So we are considering, the hearing is to consider continuation of a contract to a franchise for $1,000?
Yes, the franchise is for that private utility to utilize the right-of-way, and it's a non-exclusive franchise. That means that they can, they have equipment, in this case, it's underground, fiber optic underground, install and maintain within our right-of-way. So $1,000 is the cost to renew that franchise, and considering this renewal requires a public hearing to occur first before council can actually act on it. And so for October 7... Sorry, October 6 at 7:00 p.m., the intent is to have the public hearing, and then action would be scheduled for a following meeting.
Thank you. And just one last question. The agreement is for how long?
I believe it is five years, but I can check.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. I've not seen any other questions. So Mayor Protem Grimm, can I get a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 4649, setting 7:00 p.m. October 6, 2025, as the time and date for a public hearing to consider a fiber optic franchise with Fat Beam LLC.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion by Mayor Protem Grimm, and I have a second by Councilwoman Blaisdell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Looks like it passes unanimously. Let's go on to B, Resolution Number 4650, application for ascent easement driveway for 2020, 2001 West Lewis Street. And what's going to be by Deputy City Manager, Regis Adel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and evening, council. There was an application that was submitted earlier this year for an access easement on West Lewis Street, and... Thank you. You can see that on the location there. Lewis Street is designated as a limited access facility, which means that an abutting property does not get an automatic access to the street. It also is a fairly high-speed arterial of the city. On September 15, regular meeting, a regular council meeting, you directed staff to explore the appropriate process for staff to consider granting this easement. And we've worked with the city attorney and the applicant on this process. At first, the applicant had considered a de-acceleration lane. However, in discussion with staff, what we found is the current use does not require a de-acceleration lane, and it would be essentially an overbuild. So we discussed that with the applicant. They're okay with just a clear cut, I believe that's the right word here, a standard driveway cut rather than adding a de-acceleration lane. So that is the process that we are recommending here. You have three options, essentially. You can deny the request to access easement altogether. You can direct staff to revise our recommendations if you feel like we need to reconsider the designs and the conditions, or approve the access easement as we have recommended. And with that, I'm open to any questions that you might have.
Is there any questions from the dais as far as on this issue?
I got one.
All right, so Councilwoman Leo, what else?
Thank you, Mayor. So what's the reasoning behind no de-acceleration lane?
There is just not enough traffic count from what the applicant has given us, where it really requires that level of build to the street, because you're not having that many cars go by, that you require a lane that would need to turn right there.
Well, I mean, we want... I mean, if we're trying to be proactive and looking forward, we want more traffic coming into the city of Pasco. So I guess it's kind of short-sighted to not do that now, just to get it done. And they're going to pay for it, right? They would pay to do the improvements.
Yes, and in future, if there is a use for it, then the applicant would have to build it, and we would have to come to council and probably have similar discussion. But at this time, the applicant did not have a project that, I believe it was maybe 10 cars a day, so it was a very low count that did not justify such an investment and also impact to the street itself.
So is the applicant happy about that? Or are they just like, "Okay, if you guys are going to approve this, fine, the way it is"? Because I know that they had, I think they had submitted a design that had a de-acceleration lane.
And they did submit a design that excluded the de-acceleration lane after our discussions as well. I cannot account for the happiness or sadness of the applicant itself, but what I can say is that they understood our questions, and they recognize that there might be a need in the future, but right now, that need is not borne out.
Okay. And then I'm fine with what's presented. I just would think, you know, if we want to be, make our roads safer and stuff, it would just be more prudent to do it now. But if people are happy with what's been presented, meaning the applicant and everyone up here, I'd be happy with that. Thank you, and thank you for your work on this.
All right. With that, I'm not seeing any other... Oh, you got me, or Protem Grimm, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I just wanted to start off where Mr. Peralis finished. And thank you, it sounds like there was a lot of back and forth, a lot of communication. I know that takes a lot of staff time, but I appreciate the customer service. That's what we should be doing for our public. And just so, I do remember the presentation on this earlier in the year, but just so, basically, they are just asking for curb cuts off of Lewis Street, and our concern was because it's 45 miles an hour, the speed of possible rear-ending collisions and that kind of stuff. That's...
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right. Well, now I don't see any other ones, so now...
Mr. Mayor, okay, just a quick... So one of the concerns, and I just want to make sure we're all talking about the same thing, is I'm not sure the connection's being made there, but it sounds, based on the easement that, excuse me, the easement that we drafted, it says specifically that the benefit of the real property described above, and then it talks about how it would be specific location thereof determined by the development review process for the city of Pasco. So what, and that's really the whole point, the original concern that we had, and I don't know if folks remember that, was would this be even possible? You know, because there's two steps to this, right? There's the, there's the actual granting of the exception to your code, which says no driveways on this portion of Lewis, which is what you're doing tonight. And then there's the development review process. Now, I don't know if you don't reserve that with regard to this particular easement in terms of future improvement. If something changes, it might be difficult to then go back and then require them to make additional improvements. I don't know that we would be able to do that through this document. So I just want to be clear, I'm not sure on what the, what the question was to be able to potentially do that, or you're going forward with this document, because I don't think this one is going to be able to do that at this point. And I'd have to defer to staff and their ability to ensure that that would be the case through other things. I just didn't want to give the impression that that was in this document, the reservation of additional improvements should a de-acceleration lane be required. So anyway, just with that, I don't mean to make more discussion out of something, but I just want to make sure we're all on the same page about what this document does. It just gives an exception to the code.
Okay, let's jump to Councilwoman Brahas.
Thank you. In regards to this particular request for an easement, traffic does go by not a lot of times, don't hear this, chief, not a lot of times adhering to the speed limit. So my view, because I've driven by there several times and almost hit, seeing the speed going through there, I think it's a high-risk area to allow it. going through there, I think it's a high-risk area to, to allow an easement, potentially causing some type of accident in that area in particular. Now, we're talking about development, how soon are they developing? This is, this is a commercial area, but it's not a very active commercial area, as some of the businesses in this strip are closed.
As we mentioned in the staff report, as we add more driveways, as with any street, and we have Director Sarah here, who's the expert at this, we will have to look at speed overall. And so as you get more driveways, as you get maybe more traffic, we would have to look, look into that. So probably in future, 45 miles per hour is not a speed that you will see, but that time is not right now.
Well, and for clarification, just to recall, so this was, this is a very, very old ordinance that started this. So just so that it's clear about what the original, I guess, goal of the council was at the time, was that the policy declaration in 1085010 was unrestricted access to and from public streets has resulted in congestion and peril for the traveler. It has caused undue slowing of all traffic in certain areas. It's therefore declared the policy of the city to limit access to certain streets within the city in the interest of safety and for the preservation of public investment in its streets. So that was, to kind of frame the question, that was the original goal of the ordinance, and this is you granting an exception to that policy.
All right. Thank you for that. Let's go with Councilman Harbster.
Now, I was just going to refresh everybody's memory that when we last discussed this, one of the items that I brought up, or points of discussion, rather, was that, I think, I'm trying to remember exactly, but I think it was within a quarter mile of this section on Lewis Street, there's something like 15 driveway entrances. And so, you know, this isn't some cutting-edge thing. And if in the future we need to adjust the speed limit, then that's why we've got a speed limit policy.
All right. I agree with that. 45 is quite fast if you're trying to turn, if there's a turn lane there. Let's go with Mayor Protem Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just one last comment, you know, just pulling this up on Google Map. I mean, there's no legal access for the entire strip of Lewis, and if somebody ever wanted to do anything, you know, have a separate, you know, business here, just having the one access there off 20th really, really does, you know, limit the ability for us to, you know, have more business and revenue in the city. So I suppose I'll just go out and say I would be in favor of this, Mr. Mayor, granting them the curb cuts.
All right. Thank you for that. Not seeing any other questions, so Mayor Protem Grimm, can I get a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You may. I move to approve Resolution Number 4650, authorizing the mayor to execute the access easement deed for 2001 Lewis LLC.
Second.
So we got a motion by Mayor Protem Grimm, and a second by Councilman Peralis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
No.
All right. So six to one. All right. So let's move on to number 10, unfinished business. I'm not seeing anything. So we're going to move on to 11, which is new business. So we have 11A, which is Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, LTAC, recommendations for the 2026, and we have Assistant City Manager Angela Pashon.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. So the item before you is the 2026 recommendations from, for the use of lodging tax funds. So this is an annual allocation process and is funded through the collection of 4% local lodging tax on short-term accommodations such as hotels and motels. To be eligible for funding, an application must be received and be either for tourism marketing, marketing operations of special events designed to attract individuals from 50 or more miles away, operations in capital for tourism-related facilities owned or operated by municipalities or a PFD, and operations for tourism-related facilities owned or operated by a nonprofit organization. The annual, annually, the city, the city's Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, or LTAC, meets to develop recommendations based on available funding and applications received. For 2026, projected revenue is $850,000. We received 22 funding requests, which totaled over $1.5 million. Additionally, over the past several years, the repayment of the Giza Stadium Improvement bond debt has been included as an annual allocation through this program. However, we've been using fund balance in the stadium fund, and this has, utilizing these funds has led to a collection of fund balance within the lodging tax fund. This is, this was done as a recommendation in conjunction with finance for, basically, these, there was a fund balance prior to, we used to have 2% and 2% that were put into different funds. So this 2% for the stadium fund was really us drawing that down to make it so that it was zero. With that temporary increase, our fund balance in the lodging tax fund has increased to about $2.3 million. So I say that because we will be recommending, one of the recommendations is to use some of that fund balance in 2026. In tonight's packet, you have all the applications. I think there's about 130 some pages, so I didn't, I figured you guys might want to go through those yourself. But the requests, let me get here, the requests, or the recommendations from Lodging Tax who met last week are on your screen, and as I said, just over 135,000 where, is included in the recommendation to be used for fund balance. And that's primarily for, if you look to the bottom right, a portion of adding a fence at the Pasco Soccer Complex, which the city took over operation in fall of 2024. So increasing, we've seen increased interest in that facility over the last year for tournaments. This fence would improve and enhance safety and security, but it also continues to invest in the property itself, which will be helpful to attract more tournaments in the future. So tonight, staff is requesting council to consider the following alternatives for the 2026 lodging tax recommendations. One is either to accept the recommendations as presented. Two is you can send the recommendations in their entirety back to the committee itself for further consideration. You can also line items, strike activities, and leave the rest as is. So you can't change funding amounts of activities, but you could take out actual specific activities. Or you can strike individual activities and then remand everything back to the Lodging Tax Committee for further consideration. I am available for any questions.
All right. I will say before I get to you, Councilwoman Blaisdell, that it was a long meeting. We did go over all this stuff. There was people online that were, wanted us to go for their particular event or their ideas. We didn't go for it. We tried to be very fiscally responsible. We only had an encounter of 10,000 to work with, so we had to act. And just so you know, a lot of the stuff that was on here was the bare minimum that these different organizations were asking for. So we didn't jump anybody over what they asked for. It was, we had to really trim, cut things, and really make sure that we were getting people in hotels. So that was our, our main point of this, nothing extra, stick with the budget, and again, some heated conversations, but I thought we did a good job. But let's hear what you have to say, Councilwoman Blaisdell.
I like the hotel part. My question is on the mural program. Was that part of this?
So for the mural program that is currently running, it was an original allocation from 2024, or 2020, where are we in, 2024 was the allocation, and I believe it was $20,000. We went back, the city went back and requested that. We had $10,000 left in that for, at the end of 2024, just based on how long it took us to get the program up and running. That rolled over to 2025. So it's not included, we didn't include it in a request for 2026 funding. However, I'm working to see if I can find a local sponsor for that program.
So we currently have $10,000 left in that?
You won't shortly. So Cafe Conarte just finished up a mural on their facility, and we are processing their reimbursement. And then there is one on American Family Insurance as well that is finishing up. So that will be zeroed out by the end of this year.
Okay. I guess my opinion about, especially because District, that falls in District 6, I personally think that the mural program has brought life to downtown, and I would like to continue to see more life being brought to downtown. I would like to see that in recommendations for 2026. That's my two cents.
All right. So let's go to the side of the room. We'll start with Councilman Harbster.
Thank you. I don't know if I remember calls. I had a plethora of comments regarding this last year, and I don't have that many this year. So thank you for your guys' work and Ms. Pashon's. I did honestly notice that when I looked at it, it seemed more fiscally responsible this year. Swim the Snake. The, it's such a small event, I get $20,000 out of 2.3 million. I just want to make mention of that. The, I did, however, look up information about the event, saw that it's a fundraiser for Blue Mountain RC&amp;D, which is, reading what they do, it seems a lot like what the Franklin Conservation District does. So I suppose that's some of the, we could support. Do any of you three that were involved know how many people attended last year, and if these funds really are kind of making a difference for them and whatnot?
I knew you'd probably ask this year. So we did reach out. They had over 60 participants in, so you'd think then in addition to that, the families that come with them, and it was over 25 that came from out of our area. They used area codes, so 509 was a high number, but I can't give you that it wasn't, you know, spoke hand. But I can tell you that at least 24 of them were a 208, a 253, 306 kind of number.
Appreciate that. Thanks.
Yeah, so we did remember your comments, so we did have, that was actually probably the, one of the bigger things was Swim the Snake, as far as trying to get things, just so you are heard. We did remember what you had said last year. Yes. So, well, let's give Councilwoman Brahas a chance, and then I'll circle back to you, okay?
Thank you. In regards to Swim the Snake, that's a, that's something that's historic now. They, we've been, we've been sponsoring them, is that the word? We've been helping them out for several years, right?
Last two years. They were, I will say that our marketing team and our communications team has done a really great job about marketing these dollars and opportunities, so we've seen a lot more interest in this fund, and that's where I believe Swim the Snake.
So I take back my historic, but, you know, I've seen it on there constantly, once or twice, but it's not a huge amount, and they do bring in tax dollars. They do stay in our hotels. So I do see that as, you know, giving back. My question is in regards to the committed requests. Are we able to send back a portion? And if you could go back to what we could remand? Are we able to review, remand, resend, resend parts of, or the section that is committed request? My question is because of the amount designated to, to the Happo Center.
So for the Happo Center, this is the city of Pasco being the applicant, and this is, knowing that the ILA expires at the end of this year, and not knowing where that's going to land, this is a, more of a security for the city, because if, you know, something were to continue and we didn't have these funds available, you would have to look for another opportunity or go through another fund to be able to do that.
Perfect. You answered my question perfectly. So that goes back to the community in case there's more questions into why we continue supporting Happo. But other than that, I do want to recognize that it's, it looks lean. I appreciate that, because there was just a lot of stuff that was from out of town or didn't pertain, so I do appreciate what I'm looking at now. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and let's go to Mayor Protem Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to just ask if, the only one of these that I cannot connect to something local is the Northwest Rainbow Conference. I mean, I get it's for the Rainbow Girls of the Eastern Stars and all that, but is that an event actually here in Pasco?
Thank you.
Yep. So Visit Tri-Cities is on the Lodging Tax Committee, and I can tell you that Hector, as well as Monica, who is the representative for the hotels, were very excited about this. It's a three-year commitment, and they said it's, I think, 600 rooms.
Oh, that's fantastic. Yeah, I just couldn't connect it to an actual event here, so, perfect. And our number one priority is heads in bed, so I love it. Thank you so much.
And I think if I heard right, it was in Yakima, so this is, meant as moving from Yakima to Pasco, so blessing on that. So let's go back. Did you mark that? Okay. Well, I guess we don't have any comments on that. So if I could get a motion, Mayor Protem Grimm.
Can I just ask one more thing for the sake of discussion? So were we hoping to add the murals? Because I don't see them in there.
I can speak on that. Because the murals was not an app, an application that was placed, we can't put funds towards that in 2026, but I can follow up with you in regards to my efforts outside of this process for finding a sponsor for that program.
Thank you for that clarification, because I didn't see it in any of the options. I only saw removing, so thank you for the clarification. With that, I move to approve the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee recommendations for the 2026 funding allocations as presented.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion, option one, by Mayor Protem Grimm, and we have a second by Councilwoman Blaisdell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All right. Looks like we've got a unanimous decision on that. Love that. And we're going to move to item B, which is payment processors, and we're going to have interim director Garcia.
Good evening, Counsel. So we are here to discuss options on the online payment processors. So currently, we have our, we have Paymentis, which is mainly used by utility billing and some cemetery and miscellaneous payments. So currently, the, the contract expires at the end of, towards the end of November, so we are at an opportunity to explore some options of either staying with that contract or moving to a different one. And so at the, overall, we are seeking guidance on selecting the new vendor and just reviewing our different options here. So part of also of changing, of potentially changing the online service that we offer for payments, we'd also like to implement a fair fee structure. I think earlier this year, during the summer, it was discussed to explore options for passing on credit card fees to customers, so that is being factored into this, just since it's a good time. If we move to a different contract, it'd be a good time to implement that as well. So overall, just where we're at, activity-wise, we have about 5,000 customers who have their, who use the ACH service, which is when they enter in the routing and bank account information, and that typically has a flat fee as opposed to credit card services that has a more complex fee structure. And the fees that are directly tied to ACH processing is about $90,000 a year just for ACH. The total cost for our Paymentis contract is a little over $500,000, which includes for all card processing and online payment services. And if we move forward with changing the fee structure, we would expect that there'd be some change in behavior. So if we offer a fee option, a free option for ACH payments, we would expect that that process would change, and we'd have more users of that method. So we have here the comparison fee schedule for the two, so for Paymentis, which is our current provider, and Tyler Payments. And Tyler Payments is the native online processor for our utility billing system and our overall financial system. So there is a lot of integration that comes along with that new provider, because it's the same company that we use for the majority of our system. So our utility billing, our financial system, is with that same. So our utility billing, our financial system is with that same, uh, company. So right now with Paymentis, it's a third party. So there's a lot of manual processes of exporting information, importing and a lot of, uh, manual, uh, just workload that goes along with that. With Tyler Payments, there is, um, a lot of just automatic benefits with having it integrated and having it be the same company. So this, uh, fee schedule, I know there's a lot of information here. Kind of hard to see, sorry. Um, uh, but overall, and it's, and I know it's not a very apples to apples, uh, comparison just because they have different fee structures. Um, but here we have just in, um, we use July's data and this is actual activity that went through our online processor. And we have, um, on Tyler Payments, what we did is we used our actual activity for July and applied the current, uh, fee schedule that Tyler Payments is offering. And the Paymentis column is what we were actually charged. So as you can see, um, in every category, Tyler Payments is the less expensive option. And on top of that, um, with the proposal of passing on the credit card fees, that's an additional savings to the city. If those fees are passed on, so that first line there with the credit, um, the proposal is, along with changing our, uh, provider would be to also, um, change the fee structures. So the city absorbs, uh, debit and ACH, um, processing fees, but the, any credit card processing fees would be passed on to customers. Uh, so there, you know, by offering the ACH and debit, uh, as a free option, we are still allowing that in, and allowing those, um, different methods to customers. And if, uh, customers choose to use a credit card, then they would pay that convenience fee and that processing fee. So and on top of the, the fees themselves being lower, um, that top line would also be passed on to customers. Um, kind of just summarizes what I just said of overall, it's an, um, it's a savings. Um, and the, and on top of the fact that the fees are lower, there's also a lot of indirect savings with a lot of efficiencies within the, the processes themselves with having it all integrated. And there's a lot of additional enhancements as well, uh, that are for the customers. There's more, um, options for the customers to be able to submit requests and, um, set up information. They can see their information live, um, when their bills are, um, updated. So there's a lot of, um, enhancements to the features that are currently being offered and on top of it being more efficient internally. So as I mentioned, um, it's very, it's integrated. There's a lot of automation that would come with this, uh, new software, uh, provider. Um, there's also a, um, a lot of support that is being available right now with that provider. So they, for example, they are, uh, waiving implementation fees right now because of our relationship that we have with our financial system. So those fees are all being waived and they are, have, um, the support available to get this implemented to go live in November. Uh, so here's a, uh, just the overall timeline. So if, um, council, um, provides approval to move forward with the, um, the Tyler Payments, uh, we are available to start the implementation process within the next week or two and have, uh, the go-live to be in late November. So now kind of switching gears over to the customer perspective. Um, so if a customer does decide or chooses to use a credit card to pay, uh, their bills online, um, we just kind of provided some examples of what that would look like, uh, for their payment. So the, the average pay, utility payment is around 140, 150. Uh, so that would essentially be a 225 fee. And that fee is, uh, clearly displayed online. So they know that that, they would be, charge that fee and it would be clearly outlined on their receipt. So it's, it's very transparent of, um, you know, chart, passing that fee on to the customers. Um, so just kind of some examples of what that would look like depending on the payment amount. Um, and overall, there's a lot of benefits to, um, moving to Tyler Payments. You know, the cost effectiveness, the, um, streamlined processes. Um, however, there will be impacts to the public because it's, um, you know, it's a change, especially for those customers who have their online payment, um, set up. So what, what would change is the actual website where they go to make their payment. So it's integrated into our site. There's a link on there. So it's, some people just have that already saved. So it would be a different actual website where they go in and make their payment and they would have to, um, set up their auto pay again. So, um, we've, from past experience, when we, when these kinds of changes happen, there is, um, kind of a three to five month change process, uh, just because it does take some time for, uh, customers to kind of change their, um, habits, especially for auto pay is kind of a one and done. People just log in and set it up. So it's a easy thing to, I guess, forget to update. But to try to mitigate that, those impacts, we have been working with our communications team, uh, to come up with a variety of, um, communication methods to, you know, go online, of course, social media, uh, presentations here at council to update on the implementation process. Um, and our website, we also have, um, inserts that we could have on that bill itself. So there's, um, a variety of, uh, which I can go, there's listed here, uh, which we could go into detail if you would like. Uh, but we also can do automated calls and hangers on doors. So there's a lot of, um, communication efforts that we can implement to try to mitigate that, um, impact to the, to customers. Um, and again, um, there's, you know, the process is not just leading up to the conversion. It's also that timeframe afterwards. Uh, so there's, uh, some, we can, there's, uh, many things that we can do. So one is, uh, we can waive late fees for that first couple of months in case people are, you know, forget to change over to that new site and that type of thing. Uh, we also have staff available that can help. Um, in the past, when we had our utility billing conversion in '23, um, that, you know, impacted customers quite a bit. And we had staff out with tablets and helping them set up their, their account online. Um, so we are, uh, available to do that similar process. Uh, so overall, we have, um, you know, the two decisions are to either move to the new payment processor or, uh, stay with the current processor. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Well, thank you for that presentation. Uh, looks like we're going to start off with Councilwoman Braus.
Thank you. Um, per what I'm reading, thank you for your presentation. Per what I'm reading, this is going to be replacing, um, the current billing system. And is this going to be fully, uh, automated?
So a lot of it would be automated. So right now there's quite a bit of processes that, uh, require, um, manual processes. For example, the, if ever it's, uh, time to, um, for shut offs, what we have to do is we have to wait until that last minute around 8:15 and pull the report and find out who, who is still late, that type of thing. And, um, with this process, it will just automatically, we can see pending payments. We can see all of that within the system without having to run any extra processes. So there's a lot of efficiency there and there's many examples like that, that is very automated.
Thank you for that. Um, you know, I agree with this. Every time I call BDI, they charge me like three bucks for making my payment over the phone. So I don't see why the city should be continuously eating up fees. It's unfortunate, but this is a, uh, looks like per what you're presenting and what I'm looking at, it seems to be a more convenient economical, uh, option. And how long does it take to, um, switch over?
Takes about six to eight weeks. And, um, so we have, we've had discussions already with the processor and we are, uh, ready to go. And so are they as soon as we get that approval.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Let's move on to Mayor Protem Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Garcia, for putting all this together. Just one question for you and then a bunch of comments. But, um, in your July 25, July 2025 comparison, um, you showed the difference between Paymentis and Tyler Payments. Would the difference you're showing there account for people that, um, actually switched from credit card to ACH? I mean, it's kind of an unknown factor, correct?
Right. Yeah. This is, um, this is more of if we would have had Tyler Payments in July for that same exact activity, this is what the payments would have been, what the fees would have been to us. So, uh, it doesn't factor in any hypotheticals. So we, the only hypothetical that we have right now is we, um, expect that people would probably shift over to ACH since that's the free option for customers. Um, probably around 25% of our customers would shift over. Uh, so right now we pay 90,000 in ACH fees. And if that 25% does shift over, that would increase to like around 112,000.
No, I really appreciate that. Thank you so much. And yes, I've been a big proponent of this from the beginning. I really appreciate your work on this. Um, I guess I, I have one other question. Were you, we're looking at, um, going to online permitting to where, um, our developers and stuff can fill out all this online? I'm assuming this is going to all integrate to that and?
Unfortunately, it doesn't. Um, permitting process is in Tracket, which is outside of, um, the Tyler company. So that is another item that, um, we have been exploring that. We tried to see if it could work with either Paymentis or with, uh, Tyler, uh, payments. And that, that is one of the items, um, that we've been, we've been working. We've been definitely trying to get it in there. But the, the challenge is that most companies are, um, kind of they come with their own processor. So Tracket has their own and, uh, there's not a lot of flexibility there to have another provider.
Okay. Thank you. No, I appreciate that clarification. Um, you know, I don't think the public really realizes why these credit card companies push these mileage reward cards so much is because they are big money for them and it gets put on the back of the, the, the actual processors themselves or the, I, I guess actually the, the retailer, the person who actually takes it, which in this case is the city. So it is really just the taxpayers who are allowing people to get all these rewards and extra miles and everything on their credit card. And as much as I love to take advantage of that, as much as anybody, like, um, the councilwoman next to me said, um, you know, it, it shouldn't be on the citizens of Pasco. Typically, whether it be, I think she cited, um, BDI or the state of Washington or when you paid Josie Kelzer for your property taxes, I mean, you are making that choice between 3% or no charge at all. And I don't know anybody that really, given that choice, wouldn't take the free option. And I appreciate as our deputy city manager brought up time and time again, that, um, just being able to pay online is a huge labor saving to ci- city staff. And, um, we would want to always give them a free option because going and un, opening all those envelopes and processing the checks would be a huge workload. So I am definitely in favor of this. The one thing that I would want to, I guess, um, ask for that hopefully my other council members will go along with is you spoke of how big of a, um, transition this was for the customers before in 2023, that maybe if we moved it to four months of no late fees, just to give the people a little extra cushion that maybe aren't opening their bills as they should every month and seeing what they're actually paying and just so used to that, just to extend that grace period a little bit would, I think, be good for our citizens. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could add, um, a couple of, uh, things to, um, uh, interim director. There is, uh, an issue with the current Paymentis contract, uh, which is that it is exclusive to all payment processing. And it used to be fine because prior softwares used to integrate with a third-party payment processors fairly easily. They had their roster of what they integrated with, what they called them preferred partners. But now what we're seeing more and more is that each software comes with its own payment processor. It's kind of a turnkey. They're partners and they will not take anybody else. If they do take someone else, there's a really high risk that they're going to stop supporting you at a certain point. Either they kick you out, very likely the support just gets eroded to such a level that you just can't have this integration. And what we're finding with Tracket, which is our permitting system, uh, is that the, the system that we have itself is so old, uh, that, uh, it doesn't have its own payment provider. And we have this exclusive contract with Paymentis. So we can't use it legally anyway. But to get to the next stage and allow for people to be able to pay for permits online, what we actually need to do is upgrade that system to a newer version, which is long overdue. So that is what we're doing right now. And, um, it's delayed that integration with the payment processing and allow online payments, uh, in the permitting realm. But we are, uh, looking at first quarter of 2026, uh, upgrading and providing all of those services that will include online, uh, forms for online applications essentially so that that, all of that work can be done, uh, completely online. So this effort of, uh, transition is twofold. One is to get out of that exclusive contract. So we, we would end our contract with Paymentis. And then if, if council did, uh, recommend that we stay with them, we would have to create a new contract. It would be with the same, um, same company, but a new contract that would have that exclusive language out of it, uh, so that we can move forward with permitting software and online, uh, payments there.
All right. Well, thank you for that. Uh, let's go to Councilwoman Braus.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to revisit, um, our six, 23, 2025 meeting. And I remember in this discussion for utility payments, it says, well, well, we talked about three options. One, passing on, passing on all fees for utility payments again. Two, continuing to absorb all fees, the current model estimating annual impact of $500,000. Or three, absorbing ACH fees or passing on card fees. So what I'm seeing today is that we would absorb the ACH by passing on the credit card. So we're, we'd be saving about $250,000. Is that still accurate based on the report back in June?
Uh, we believe so. I, I, we think that the ACH fees overall are going to be, um, around 120,000, as Director Garcia mentioned. Um, in that estimate overall, we have, we're kind of estimating some of the other activities that would be transferred out, like there's other transactions that happen outside of utilities as well. 250 is a pretty generous estimate, but at this point.
That's what I was wondering based on what I was seeing. I'm like, well, the numbers don't really, um, match up to what we talked about in June, but it's still cost savings. Um, I could pay for your murals. I think so. Uh, I, I like the direction and I, I will support this tonight.
All right. Thank you for that. Yeah, I also, uh, like it. Sounds like Tyler's the way to go. And, uh, yeah, anytime we could save money and, you know, try to make a lean, uh, city hall is what we want. So, uh, unless we have any other objections, I think this is the way we should move forward. And so not seeing any other questions. So let's move on to 12, which is miscellaneous discussion. Do we have anything that council would like to bring up or our new, uh, city manager?
Yeah, yes, just a few things of, I mean, Mr. Mayor and, and members of the council. Uh, first of all, welcome Councilmember Cotta. Look forward to working with you. I just, I did want to address some of the information provided underneath the, uh, the public comment because I think there was some misinformation. So I do just want to address that really quickly if I can, just to make sure that there's some facts out there. So the meeting that, that was addressed before was at a work session. Work sessions are designed for staff to talk about options and alternatives with the council to get direction so that we can go through the right processes for the actual actions that you take. So, uh, during that meeting, council did give staff direction to move forward with the, the tab, uh, fees potentially. There was, uh, either some misunderstanding, I think, that I want to clarify here too. Uh, there were some references to the tab fees being $50. Uh, that is incorrect. The city of Pasco is the only city in the tri-cities that actually does not currently charge any fees. So under state law, the council has two options. Uh, you can either charge a fee via sales tax, as was addressed here in other public comments this evening, or there is a tab fee that we can do. And by state law, when the city of Pasco should choose to move forward with this, is limited to only a $20 fee at the beginning. And then I believe it's every five years, you can increase it at another $5. I'm sorry?
Yeah, it, it goes in 20, 40, 50.
Okay. So anyway, there's a, there's a delay in time process that the city can then, um, increase that amount. that amount. But I wanted to be clear, what we're talking about right now, what staff proposed was a twenty dollar tab fee, which is the max that we can do at the first implementation of it. And since Pasco has never implemented this, this is the first implementation. Now, the public can debate whether or not that fee should exist in the first place. And as part of that, the official process for the city of Pasco and the council to consider that does require a public hearing, which will be scheduled more than likely in the second meeting of November. So between now and that public hearing, the public has more than enough opportunity to reach out to council members, come talk about it at public comments, at regularly scheduled meetings, or even our work sessions, because the council has opened that up for public comment as well, which you're not required to do, but we do anyway to increase transparency and dialogue. So you have until now to the second meeting in November and we will have an official public hearing at the second meeting in November, at which point the council can make a decision on whether or not you want to implement any fees at all and which alternative you want to do. So I did just want to clarify that. And then in addition, with Councilmember Catta coming on place, I do just want to update the council that I've directed staff to look at some orientation packets for newly elected officials. So one, so we can get that from Mr. Catta. It does need some updating, but we also intend to have that up to date so that after the November election, when there's new council members elected, that we have up-to-date orientation materials to get to the new council members, help them get up to speed as quickly as we can. And then finally, I just had a couple of updates for the public for some opportunities of participation with city staff and important pieces of some processes that council will have coming before them here in the near future. So first of all, our police department will hold a District Two Business Watch meeting on Tuesday, September sixteenth from one to two P M. in the Walmart Team Meeting Room. It's at the back of the store at, at the Walmart. So, and then also there will be a police department District Two Community Meeting that will be held on Thursday, September eighteenth at six P M. at the Grange Hall. Then we do have materials available, so you can either contact City Hall or look at our Facebook or social media pages for further information on that, times and places of those. And then also, we will have our second of two fluoride public feedback sessions that is also advertised on our website and social media. And that will happen Wednesday, September seventeenth, so in two days, at six P M. here at City Hall in this room, the city council chambers. So if anyone has any opinions on whether we should continue including fluoride in our water treatment or whether it should be removed, there is a public feedback session on that this Wednesday here at City Hall in this, in this room, council chambers. And at that one, you can either attend online or in person. And you can register online on our website to attend, to speak virtually at that meeting if you would like. So, and then also I would just like finally to thank staff. I think you may see some, some changes here. There was some more emphasis on today's agenda with regards to different alternatives the council has on different agenda items. And I appreciate the staff following my lead and direction to provide that to the council on agenda items. So that's all I have for this evening, unless the council has any questions for me.
All right. Thank you for that, City Manager Stewart. Let's go with, Mayor Pro Tim Grimm was first, so let's start with him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My comments kind of fall in line with what our city manager, Mr. Stewart, was saying. Just far as public meetings, I mean, I'm sure we all remember, but may, maybe the citizens don't completely recall that before this council was completely in effect and came together, that, yeah, we, there was no public comment during workshop meetings. And one of the things that always stuck with me was that we could have something presented by staff and most of these are just, you know, typical items that are just kind of run-of-the-mill, but if staff presented something and we said, yeah, you know, we, we like the sounds of that, that could potentially go on our consent agenda, which is then voted on before the public has even the opportunity to comment. And so really, I thank this whole council for opening up our workshop meetings to allow the public to comment on each and every individual item that may come up so that we don't find ourselves in a place where the public doesn't have a chance to respond. And so, you know, I get it, there's a lot of emotions and passions and, you know, appreciate wanting, people wanting to get involved, especially like somebody like Mr. Iman, who has really just kind of, you know, been, been a good fighter for the public for a long time. But some of those things that were, were claimed tonight were just factually untrue and there's tightened time and date stamps to prove otherwise. And so, again, I appreciate anybody that comes out and wants to be a part of local government, but yeah, we have to make sure all of our facts are right. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you for that, Mayor Pro Tim Grimm. I know we try hard, everybody up here on the dais has tried hard to be transparent and especially when it comes to taxes. Again, I can reiterate, nobody wants taxes. I mean, I don't know anybody up here that's saying, hey, let's tax them. So it's very frustrating to hear, you know, the different comments that we received in our email boxes when we're trying to be as transparent. I know Mayor Pro Tim Grimm even reached out. I saw some of his correspondence reaching out to people and it didn't seem like there was comments back or even calls made and he didn't get calls back or... So it's, it's hard when you're trying your best to do the right thing and people still want to hear they have an agenda and they kind of want to believe what they want to believe. And with that, I'll go to Councilwoman... It's a long night. Blanche, just go with Councilwoman Blanche. I won't say her.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you. I do have some comments and, and I want to address these comments with the utmost respect for everyone's views, religious views, political views, and however, and wherever you stand on that. But one of the things that we talked about today, comments that we heard from, from the community today, people that visited, was in regards to, we have a conservative city council, we have a conservative mayor. But I want to remind the community wide, we're on camera, we want to remind you all that we as council members might be part of a political party, but we, this position is nonpartisan. Every single council member here must run as a nonpartisan candidate. So I hope, even those that are currently up for running for a position in city council, please take that to heart because you represent the whole community. You cannot be biased on views based on what your party or a party wants. You are representing a community that thinks differently than you, than us. And so we need to be very much on the fence when it comes to picking sides. So with that said, and again, with full and utmost respect, we read a proclamation that the majority of the crowd that was here was upset about. And rightfully so. There was comments made, there was documentation, documentation passed out regarding why they feel it shouldn't have followed through. And, and I agree, actually, I agree with that. Because again, it comes back to if that proclamation stated several things that align with, with picking the side, with picking a party, picking a, a religion. And, you know, many, many years ago, there was a separation of church and state. It's actually established in the U.S. Constitution. So although everybody thinks different and everybody has their opinions, this is not, my words are not in regards to the person that was killed. But I also want to mention that there has been so many other killings in the U.S. up until today. How many mass shootings has there been in the U.S.? We did not recognize those individuals. But I'll take it back to, again, you know, you can practice your personal beliefs, your personal thoughts, your personal stance on a political side outside of this council. We were elected as nonpartisan individuals to represent the city as a whole. We do have a policy, though, a proclamation policy that I want to read through, because maybe we forgot. It says, "Proclamations are issued by the mayor of the city of Pasco, ideally provided on opportunity for the city to recognize exceptional events. The goal of a proclamation is to recognize and celebrate the extraordinary, extraordinary achievements of Pasco citizens and nonprofit organizations on occasions of importance and significance and increase public awareness of issues to improve the well-being of people in this city." And then it gives you a link on where to file and request a proclamation. But the policy also says, "We ask that request be submitted thirty days prior to the date needed." I don't think that was followed in this situation, but there may have been reasons, extraordinary reasons for that, that again, we did not follow our own policy. Our request should clearly include contact information, affiliation, all of that. It reads also, "Request should include draft language of what background information about the exceptional event should be." I'm assuming that was followed. But as you continue reading, it says, "We are unable to accommodate proclamations for out-of-community events or for profit causes." You keep reading, it says, "Greetings from the mayor or other forms of recognition can be issued when a proclamation request does not meet the guidelines. Greetings and/or other recognitions shall be used to honor special events or individuals within the city of Pasco." There were events community-wide, statewide, nationwide, I'm assuming, too, in regards to the passing, the killing of Mr. Kirk. I would invite you all to attend on your own time to these celebrations of life, to these commemorations of life, to acknowledge the work that he did, if you so aligned with what he did and said. But also, Mayor, I want to highlight that I named a few names earlier. I would like for you to please add it to your agenda, to issue out proclamations for these individuals that were mentioned before, to also recognize them and show the community that we're not biased, that we are for the community of Pasco and we acknowledge everyone that has suffered or been killed or been a victim of a heinous crime, like these other individuals as well.
Okay. Well, again, I did apologize and apologize again. I meant to, in my notes, I did have that down there. I do appreciate you bringing that up. I would recommend that you do a proclamation, send it to me, I'll read it, go over it, and we'll go from there. So again, I appreciate you working on that. And yes, if you're going to blame anybody, I guess blame me about the thirty days I took upon myself.
I'd like to say, no, this is not a blame game. This is not intruding into anybody's personal thoughts. This is, this is, if we're going to do things a certain way, then let's do them that way. We have policies and guidelines to follow and again, respectfully for everyone, whoever, whatever you want to believe, that's on you, but don't bring it to the city council.
Okay. I appreciate your viewpoint. That's the way I think about America. Everybody has an opinion. So again, I'm going to take blame for this if that's what we want. That's my point of view, but please put that together. I will go over it. And I guess we got a couple of lights on, so Councilman Harpster, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I do, but I'm going to not.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. And City Manager Stewart, did you want to comment on something as well?
Well, while we're talking on the, the subject of proclamations and it's somewhat related, but not, not completely, so staff in the, in the preparation of the agenda and those kinds of things, obviously we had our recognition of Hispanic Month and so that proclamation was originally prepared in Spanish, so we had it requested to be provided in English as well. Given some comments earlier about the makeup of our community, is this something that council would like to be done for all proclamations where it's prepared in both Spanish and English and provided in the council packets when you're doing those proclamations in both languages? So don't necessarily need an answer tonight, but something to think about of whether we make that a common practice, that we provide that in both Spanish and English for all proclamations.
All right. Well, that is something to consider. So definitely give that some thought. So luckily I'm not seeing any lights on, so let's move on to number thirteen. We have an exec session on my list here. I assume we're still going to move forward with that, correct? So discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation per R C W forty-two point three zero point one one zero, subchapter one, subchapter, subchapter I, and it looks like we're asking for fifteen minutes, so that would be nine forty-seven. Thank you, and I do appreciate everybody that did, came out and stayed till the end. Long meeting. Thank you. All right. So it is ten oh one. We are back from exec session and with no other things on the agenda, I now call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.